So.
Channel A here.
You're on A.
What's mine says? Channel A, five, four, two, twelve, two, zero. Are they all different frequencies?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Nine, five, three, oh, one, zero.
Ready to go on?
Ready? Okay, good morning. We're started the Steel County Commission meetings, May fourth, twenty twenty-one, eight AM. First on agenda and call it to order. Any agenda additions or approval or agenda additions or?
Actually, I do.
Okay.
Just last minute, like we thought. Issues, payments that are passed to and past is that if you want, as well as.
Yep.
You got an extra agenda?
Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
This Brandon, alright. I got an agenda, I got agenda addition.
Okay.
Uh, the fire declaration, we should talk about that with Ben.
I thought that was on there, okay?
Is that on there?
No.
Okay.
Any other agenda additions? Okay, we'll move to first on agenda would be IT, Travis Palm.
Minutes?
Approval of minutes as well.
Are we still on again?
Well, I usually do at the end, but um, we need approval of minutes.
Show move.
Still move.
I'll second.
We have, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carried. Okay, Travis Palm.
Hello. I wanted to speak with you about a project for wiring the courthouse, I guess. Sorry, getting you guys' ideas as far as what we should do. I kinda did a quick budget as far as just pricing together. I came up with about eighty-nine, ninety thousand for wiring every entire project, I guess. That's the, uh, the actual wire to the courthouse, the, um, raceway, and then the new network switches took everything up for that. We would have to put that out on, or at least the wiring project, put that on bits because I believe that's over the, the limit for that, but. If you guys wanna go forward that, um, I could get a scope of work, um, put together so that we can do a, an RFQ, uh, next year for that, uh, to go for the. Another thought is, you know, do we wanna split it up if it's too much for one year? You know, do you wanna do two floors this year, or, you know, next year, then two floors again the other year? Uh, that is an option. Uh, generally those, when you split stuff up, you'll have a little bit more cost for that, just for matters coming in or having separate, separate, uh, bids for them, I guess, but.
Okay, um, how much, do we put some money aside for this, or IT fund?
Let's say we maybe a little bit this year, but we should budget that for next year or break it up. It's up to.
Okay.
We could take it from the sales tax fund too, if we decided to just go ahead with it altogether. We do have the funding there.
Uh, you know, would you explain a little more, so that?
Yep, so every, uh, computer, you need a ethernet connection for the internet on there. Uh, the current design or the setup here is we have, it's called the daisy chain method. So you have a switch downstairs and then they run one or wire up to one of the rooms and you have another switch here, then there's another switch down the line. Um, and then it branches off everywhere and it's, it's, uh, not consistent as far as they're not managed switches, so we've uncovered a problem. Uh, it's a little more difficult to track down as well, you know, this person's computer is working, where's the actual connection at? Uh, the new design is, uh, it's called a home run, so one computer, one, all right down to the network switch, there's a one wire through all that, then. So we know that jack, you know, ten goes to port ten downstairs and it's easier to diagnose as well as, um, the new stuff is, it's called POE, power over ethernet. So cameras, telephones, all the new stuff like that requires that or uses that then, so. Um, that's one of the other projects we were talking about too, is, is getting a new phone system down the road. This would be of the first step for that, so this is the main hookups for not only computers but phones, since now they're IP based, they're basically the same connection your computer does then, so. That way, this takes into account that there'll be extra jacks, we put in more than what is needed, so. Um, if we do replace the phone, we just plug them in, way to go then for that, there's no additional wiring for it then, so. As well as there any additional equipment, if we put more security cameras up, for instance, or, uh, whatever might come down the road. Ethernet's kind of the standard for that. Uh, we can do video over ethernet as well, so if we were wanting to have, you know, video downstairs and here on the, on this floor too, and have be on a screen, we could use that same network infrastructure for that, so. So it, it utilizes, um, several different things for that, I guess.
Okay, so that clean up all the wiring downstairs?
Yep, that will get, that'll be taken up that, uh, you know, we, obviously we'll be working while we're doing it, so that old stuff will still be in there, new stuff will come in, we swap over, then we rip all that old stuff out, that's. Kind of a mess, it's kind of just all there, so yeah, thi- this includes like raceway, so you have long metal raceway along all the walls, so all the wires are tucked away, right now you can see them running on the floor everywhere and. You know, it's not the, the cleanest, you know, it was done to get it done.
Sure.
Which.
Okay. Well, we can talk, talk about that there in our budget means and.
Yep, and I even wanna just get you guys' idea, that, and thi- this number's two, I, I did it pretty quickly and I did it on the higher side. Uh, I didn't wanna come back and, oh, actually it's a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't wanna do that, that's, so. So when I was doing the measurements for the raceway, I did the full length around the rooms, well, obviously you're not being used all that, so, so they'll be, they'll be less and. Obviously, we'll have to get a scope of work together for the bid processes, you know, how many jacks, how many cables in each jack, where it needs to be. So that, uh, the technicians, you know, we would be bidding on as well, but obviously it has to go out for bids, so.
And then, did you figure extra for your, for future?
Yep, exactly, so that's where we would go and, um, you know, say we need a hundred connections, we always recommend at least doubling that, so then we put in two hundred just for, for maybe, but, but we, I'm sure we probably would do phones, so we would use that, the computers and phones as the base for that, and, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we have any money in that account right now? But do we, have we budgeted for somebody on, in line to get computers this year, or what?
I think everybody's pretty much up to date.
Up to date, we'll start rotating out, uh, probably next year, you know, that was one of the kind of things too, where we did, um, you know, we like to stagger computer rotation, so you're doing two, three here this year and so forth, we kinda all had to do all at once. Um, there's a few that weren't, so we'll start doing those next year, start rotating them out. Um, and then what we're trying to do is we'll push some of those computers a little longer than we should or want to, just to get, so we can get that staggered rotation then again, so we're not, like we did last time, we had a huge. Big wall front right away to get, get stuff going, so.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions? Got anything else?
Nope, I think that's, yeah, if you guys have any questions on that set too, well, I just preliminary numbers here real quick, but. Uh, then gen- general idea, I would say a hundred thousand for the project for, cause we'll have to do some electrician work to come in, I did put some, well, items in there for that, just, uh, in case we need to run an outlet somewhere too, so.
Okay. Well, that sounds good.
Alright.
Uh, thank you for coming in.
Right, thank you guys.
Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we got auditor.
Well, if they can hear me just fine, then we're good, but. Um. So I'm next on the agenda, the twenty twenty audit, I sent out in your guys' packets, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through that or not. Um, Farley's looked through it. It's finalized, it's done. Um, we did have a couple reoccurring audit findings that we've had for a few years and some of them are just system. Generated, the bond one, we get every year and that's system generated. Um, right now, I am doing monthly transfers from one bond fund to a different one to try to make. That acceptable for them, for the two different bond funds, cause we can't levy for two different bonds, so. Um, another one was the revenue. Um, adjustment, the revenue was placed in the wrong fund coming in. Um, that just goes back and we're working on that also with, um, Ben and Catherine trying to sort out. The funding that came in and where it goes, um, kinda ties into what we talked about last month at the meeting. Knowing what's going out and what should be coming in and tracking it and getting it proceeded into proper funds, um, so we don't have that occur. I did after the meeting give that information all to Ben because I could not make it line up and match, um. And neither could he, so he was gonna work with Catherine on that. Um, so we're still, I'm still waiting to hear from him on getting that straight, anything that was taken from the emergency fund should go back into the emergency fund if it was reimbursed. Whether it was Ben, Ben's stuff or Catherine's, does that make sense? So that's what we're trying to do, um, get back to on that. Did you guys have any other questions on? Any other audit? They'll be sending out the hard copy, they usually stop the binded ones that I pass out to you, so you'll get your own copy.
Was it better working with the state than with, uh, a private?
No. Um, that's a different topic, I wasn't gonna do that at the same time that we reviewed the, uh, the audit, so it wasn't. You know, in the same time, but there is a survey amongst all the counties and who they use and the cost. For them to use it because the audit bill was fairly high this year, they did have an increase in price as well as they billed us for time, which. Is here and there, but. Um. You can get a two-year audit from Bratham Merck for almost half the price. So, that'll be on one of your upcoming agendas.
Do we have a charge?
You do have a choice, yeah.
We do have a charge.
You're saying a lot of the counties are getting together now and looking at this?
No, like a two, yeah, looking at audit, audit firms.
Yeah.
They use, what they cost. Um, there's a good probably fourth of the state at least that use that company. More use the state, there's, you know. We don't really, Carrolt Rotunda does a few. Um. ID Bailey, Bailey, they do some, so Mertz. So, there's several, we researched it, I have the amount that they've paid, um, for a one-year, two-year audits, so.
So why wouldn't the state be, if, if everybody's looking at going a different direction, why wouldn't the state be looking at why they're so expensive?
I'm not sure.
If they're double charging us for the audit plus time? I mean, that's ridiculous.
They're very busy, I don't know if they just.
Well, something I think we should review.
Well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So. If, if an independent one does the same thing, I don't know why we, and it would be cheaper, I don't know why we can't go that way. I mean, unless, there's a reason, but.
Put that in your future packet to review.
No.
Yeah.
Um. Any more questions on the audit? The road levies were part of. I'll bring that up, cause it just popped into my mind, that's the one that I tried to, um, discuss with them at length. Um, the road levies, we levy a max of five mils for five mile road in front of market, we try to max that out at the ten. Um, and given our fund balances for those, they don't feel we need to levy that amount, so they wanna. So. Charlie knows, they asked for an opinion from our state's attorney, Charlie. Doesn't really mind the write-up one bit. But he should be here later, we discuss it, then he'd be one, we've always levied the five mils and the most of our.
Every. Yeah.
So, something new this year they're looking at, and they have, um, noted that in other counties as well. Um, holiday edition. Burgum did sign in through Juneteenth as a state holiday.
What day?
Juneteenth. That would be June nineteenth. As official state holiday. Um, our policy manual does say any state holidays are recognized.
It does.
Good thing it's on a Saturday.
Lucky it's a Saturday, yeah.
Oh, in the policy manual, it says holidays that fall on the Saturday revert to the Friday before or Monday after.
I knew that was coming, so what is Juneteenth, uh, significant of?
The end of slavery.
Oh.
The what?
The flavor.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
The elevator.
Longest day of the year.
That's June nineteenth, you said?
June nineteenth is the Juneteenth holiday edition.
The elevator.
The elevator.
Who got caught in it, anybody?
Yeah, the lighting guys.
Oh, how long did we stay in there?
Well, they figured it out how to get it down, I guess, if they're open.
Oh.
Did you guys look at the quote from August?
Yep.
We could go with the, the simple fix, or the quicker of the two fixes would be just to repair, um. The door opener or operator portion of it, that's what is currently broke, and that would be, uh, twenty thousand nine twenty-one. Be down for at least a month to get it, um, installed and back working. Once we do that, if something else were to break, um, because it does need to be updated and switched over, none of the current system is, um, supported right now. Cause it is out of date.
So it's a bandaid, is what it is.
It is a bandaid, something else broke, we would not have credit of that twenty thousand that we're using to fix right now, it would still be the additional sixty-five thousand on top of that. So you saw on the third page of, um, that second quote, or the third page of the courthouse. Covered one. Shows everything that that.
Is that on my, in the packet?
Correct.
Okay.
That would, uh, show everything that that modernization quote for our elevator system would consist of. And that is estimated about four months of being down.
That's sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
How old is the actual elevator? Is it two thousand two, two thousand roughly?
Long.
The part on it up there said nineteen ninety-seven.
I was gonna say it had to, yeah, because Nelson was.
I did find some paperwork from two thousand as well, two thousand two. Um, the original cost you asked me to research, one thousand, or I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one fifty.
That wasn't done in ninety-seven.
No.
I came in ninety-seven and it was done at the same time the Golden Lake store was done, cause the same architect was used.
In what year was that?
It must've been about two thousand then, or.
Yeah.
Right, twenty years old roughly.
Yeah.
So, so that sixty-five thousand, that, that is total?
Well, I, I think there's other options you could add to it as well, the way it looked.
Yeah, there are some additional things you could add, um, such as like the, the box, the car. Updates, interior, all of that.
There must be the different inside, you could pick the dimension.
Yeah.
But that would include, Brandon, it would include basically all of your, your parts.
Or sixty-five.
That's labor, I think.
I think we need to go that route, a new route.
We have to have it.
Yeah, we do.
I, I agree, we can't have people being stuck in there and that's, we just need to, we definitely need to. Figure that out, I don't know if we need to go all out with the inside and stuff like that, but it needs to be functional and, and working properly.
I agree, I think the front or the inside of the car and all of that, that's just fun.
Do we get a warranty on this new stuff?
You know?
The twenty thousand dollar one, you mean?
No, the sixty-five one, it's. All redone.
It surely thinks so.
I would imagine we would, unfortunately, I don't see that as a paperwork. We do have a. Funding we can use in the sales tax fund.
Do we have enough?
That's where the moderator will come from as well, but there's still, still funding available.
Um, so I, I think maybe we should, uh. You know, there's, there's options to pick here, so I think we need to either have him come here to a meeting or, or we need to have somebody from the board work with. You're on, you're in the building, do you wanna work with?
Yeah.
Getting the exact quote so we can figure out what it is and then we can move forward.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have him here, or.
Well, I mean, just looking at the proposal.
There's a lot of stuff there.
Three different, yeah, the insides of the car you could pick from, and we don't need nothing fancy, but.
No, and that's, um, an additional cost, so we don't need to go with that.
Oh, so you don't pick one of them?
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
No, that one's.
But then you go to the next page and then there's a whole list of. Stuff, so.
Yeah.
Those are just in, um, inspections and all of that, that's an inspection sheet for them. And they'll go through that and, um. Put that on there, what we're looking at, I did clarify with her, it is either the twenty thousand or the sixty-five. If we choose not to update the interior cap.
So there's modernization overview, that's what we're.
That is an overview of everything.
We're getting the controller, the power unit, the solid-state starter, the closed loop door operator, the fixtures.
Correct.
And the new door.
Correct.
Protection. So we reuse this card, you say?
Mm-hmm. It's just the. The box, everything that controls it and moves it is being replaced.
I've never rode on, is it all good inside yet?
Yeah, it's.
Have to go take a ride today.
It's not. It's not fancy, it's not your fanciest elevator, but it serves its purpose, just.
Yeah. And we need, I mean, there's no getting around it.
Okay, so is there a motion to? Go ahead with the elevator as long as everything's.
I'll make that motion.
Brian made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ted, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. There must be a little bit delay with Brandon.
Yeah, there, there is, I can hear it, so.
Okay, can you hear us very well?
Yeah, I can hear you guys pretty clearly.
Okay, good. All right, Russell's gonna just check with him and just follow up on all that and move forward.
Thanks.
Uh, county phone policy. This has to do with our cell phones, uh, that we were buying through the county. We had a couple go down this spring and they didn't want the provided ones that were free from the, that we always got. And with the change of cell phones, everything's gotten to be a lot more money, so we probably should change our policy. You know, they don't, they used to give you cell phones for nothing, now they're quite spending. Oh, can you tell us our, the policy we have now?
We have a government plan through the Verizon, um, for our county cell phones. The policy's always been to go with the free promo phone options that Verizon has had, and that changes quarterly with them. Um, you know, there's not a, a large variety of phones to choose from and certain. You know, Wayne's usually the one, I shouldn't say Wayne's the one, his department is the most. Maybe specific on what kind of phones to get or not get because of their job, they need to hold up longer, all of that. Um, we do also purchase the, the cases for them, the screen protectors, all of that. Um. So it's never really been too much of an issue, we've just gone with that. Um, we do have new people here, um, we have replaced four phones in the last six months or so. Um, we've had requests for the higher-end models. Um, and I would ask Richard to, you know. That that needed to be approved before we move forward. You know, but Brad just updated his and he got a free version, and it. Be fine, so. I just would like a policy, a consistent policy, so that I don't need to continue to reach out to Richard and bother him. Every time somebody wants a different phone, that's not in the. Promo package for no cost, not against updating our policy one bit, if you guys wanna do that, I would just like us to have standard policy that everybody would try to follow, that's all.
See you forward. So the phone Reed got, it has been cost much power, cause he didn't, he went. Somewhat of a basic one, I think, right?
Yeah, it ended up being a couple hundred, was all, everything. I mean, just the cases and protectors alone add the additional costs to us. Um, you know, and then if we put a, a price on, you know, you get two hundred dollars. For a phone to choose from, um, then what is the policy of the wrecked phone in four months or whatever, where do you go at that point, so? Just looking for a little bit of guidance, if you guys wanna update that policy or leave it, and.
Do we get a rate being this government or not?
Yeah.
Does that, so, so we, as a government, will cost less than what it would, for me to walk in and buy a phone?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, they're not cheap.
It's still not cheap, no, but. Other than you going in off the street.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't know how. You really can't put a dollar in one of them. And, and if they get wrecked or. And, and if they get wrecked or it's almost a each, each one might be its own different deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like road department guy drop it and run over it like I did with the blade, my old flip phone. But then that was me anyway. So it happens.
Accidents happen.
But what did the price of Brad's free phone or whatever come out to be?
Should be in there. It's probably a hundred and something.
But that was all the phones free.
Yeah.
So all those sessions.
Yeah.
Mine, we gave extra for mine because the phone they had at the time was had no memory and it basically, and it had the volume was low, the phone came back raided. So I spent a hundred dollars on this. Pretty cheap.
Yeah.
And this, I mean, this is a lower, we buy a phone, we don't close the high. There's nicer phones out there, but we.
Oh, yeah.
We get by, we put them for free, we grab it, but there's nothing. But it changes. Like this phone, last time I bought it was free. But yeah, they're charging us a lot of money for the screen projectors and the powder boxes and.
Yeah.
And now you don't get a.
And the, we don't, you gotta get the chargers now. So, and it's switched to two years now. All of our phones are making computer. But it's not with the dropping. It's not the fact. The last couple of times, it's all in the charging.
Yeah.
That's what we've. Problem is that it makes free phones for us. So that go on top of the charging ports now, we can't get those. We can get those, but you have to go up to the two hundred and fifty dollar phone.
Oh.
Everything last time to get them. They don't make, they control.
Well, it might be. Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe it's easier just to keep going as a day. See what happens with each one.
Do it on an individual basis.
Yeah. Right away, I'll. Just a individual basis, I think. My, my opinion. What do you guys want to do?
Well, it depends upon the person too. Like now I've had my phone going on four years, but you know.
It depends on how much you use.
Yeah, but we're different than.
Yeah, we're different than the highway department or the sheriff's department and stuff too. So, you know.
Yeah.
Of course, I don't use mine as much as they do.
No, no, I don't either. So.
So is that a recommendation for them to budget in their own budgets or you want that through IT? Just for budgeting purposes coming up?
You know, they probably should budget. I mean, like the screen protector. I mean, they should be able to budget something on their own office for phones.
Yeah, if they know it's coming up, a change is coming up.
Yeah. And I, I probably replace my phone once a year or a year and a half at the most. It just doesn't last.
But you're, you're, yeah, it's a business on yours. So.
And I, you know, once I've had an iPhone, I don't want to change to a Samsung or some other phone because I'm used to this one already. I mean, it's just personal preference, but. All right. So what do we, are we just gonna leave it then and just kind of do each one?
Maybe does each department have their own budget item in there as phones? They don't use it, you know, for a year, they can, you know, carry it over stuff.
Things don't carry over. Don't, don't.
Well, then every year put it one in there.
The good thing about my department is that if something does happen, I have like five on my list. So I can get upgraded. Something happens, I can upgrade it.
Your office have been very good.
Yeah, we've been pretty good. We've been, I'm, I'm surprised.
There was a while when we were going through phones, right? It was not, but those were two years ago.
They weren't dropped. They weren't, one was lost. Other than that, though. How bad?
You get this one too? A droid? I'm having trouble with my port too.
So, so we'll just continue like we're doing?
Yeah.
This year and then next year they can budget for phones and.
Thanks for baking.
Okay, emergency declaration, emergency fund.
So I wanted to discuss this. I've discussed it with Ben and Catherine a little bit and, um, Ben didn't give me anything for the meeting, um, on his end. So I put this under mine. Um, we've had the emergency declaration for just over a year now. And you know, that it does a lot of things when you have that declaration and Ben can speak to that when he comes down as well. Um, my, my interest in discussing it is to know when we can go ahead and, you know, put a halt on using the emergency fund itself, the county emergency fund and spending from that under the declaration. You know, Ben has reasons and again, we can talk about that when he comes in for wanting to keep the declaration itself open. Um, I just think it's hard to justify spending from our emergency fund when we're no longer doing a mask mandate. We're not doing testing vaccines here, you know, and our county's been very low. So I'm not opposed to leaving the declaration open. Um, but I think that we can try to try to nip spending of that emergency fund unless you guys approve it at this point. That also will help with us trying to balance it and get the funding replaced for the funds that came in on some of those items and we can look at it and get a solid number for what we're going to have in it and whether we're going to need to levy from it for the upcoming year as well.
Okay. Shall we discuss that more when Ben comes down?
Sure.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two budget guidance. Does have any guidance or, um, things you'd like us to strive for? And I don't want to have everyone turn in their budgets and then say, oh, we'd rather everybody try to hold the budget the same. We, you know, don't shoot for a ten percent increase, try to budget for three, you know, things like that, that we can give them a little bit of guidance on their department. And not have them turn it in and then us throw it back at them and say, can you look at this again? Two, three more times. Any guidance? If not, we'll go with what they give you and go through it, but.
All right. So I would favor. Can't do a ten percent increase. I would say stick around that three percent or something. We have some tough years coming up.
It's gonna be.
Yeah.
We talked last year that, um, we probably got three to four years of bad, tough years. When are there budgets due for us or to you to turn in?
Uh, they're due by May fourteenth. Carly, and that gives us time to get it put into you, um, the calculations and get you your budget binders at the next meeting. Two weeks for us to work numbers.
So next meeting, everybody's got to bring your budget binders.
Or I'll give you a new one. Brian, yours this year.
Okay. All right. Next up, public health.
All right. Try to squeeze it into my five minute time.
Good morning.
Morning.
So first thing I have, I just need Richard. I need your signature on that. That was the contract from last month. Just so I can get it submitted. Hey, so we are no longer offering COVID vaccines. Except if the school wants Pfizer. I'm in the process of getting numbers from them. If they have any sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year olds that want them. So we only have one positive in the county, one active, yesterday. The new reports aren't open for today yet.
Where's that at?
I don't know. I just know it's in the county. Unless it's in the school, I don't hear.
Has anybody been calling for vaccines?
I've had one person asked if we bring Pfizer to the school if we can give them as an elderly, elderly person. If we can get on that. And I said, if the numbers are there, if I have an extra dose, absolutely. But I'm not going to order an extra vial for one person. So, um, yeah, there really hasn't been any questions. I know. I had one person ask yesterday about it. I think there was a little misunderstanding in what's going on. So if the schools allow me to come in and give them, get a couple more visors in there. I have a couple of people to reach out to that are looking for those, but if I can get the numbers, I'll certainly, it's going to have to be the same day, you know, once I open vials, it's kind of it. So but other than that, I have a vial of Moderna sitting in the fridge. I planned a clinic yesterday, asked them to come to the courthouse. Nobody signed up. So, um, I can't give it away right now. I've even asked the surrounding counties. Nobody wants it. So I think that one's going to end up expiring unfortunately, because I got about three days left on it. So not much I can do there. I know you guys talked about the emergency declaration. We think you should leave it in place. But, um, that's just our recommendation.
And how much longer would you like to leave it in place?
Well.
Problem is that we discussed in our meetings that we have for our German operation is that we're in a recovery now, you know, we've paid the much decided that we can get out of the emergency or recovery. And though we don't expect anything that needs some money in the recovery part, sometimes there is money that's needed in the recovery part. So I think, I think what you should do is month to month look at it and see if it comes up. I mean, I think Richard related to recovery, you have to do away with it just in case. Otherwise, we'd rather do another emergency declaration and then pull up one. So maybe you should have got month to month to know if he does have these things or not. They're not pending anymore. I hope that they will, but.
And.
Otherwise, you gotta go through the voltage again and do the emergency desperation.
So unified command would disband that too. Our local unified commands if we get rid of the emergency declaration. So if you guys both decide trail and steal, that's gone.
That's southern or.
No, it's not. It's not like we don't talk and we can't set up meetings anyway and stuff, but it's mostly if all of a sudden we see a surge, you know, and that's something too. If you guys would rather just call an emergency meeting, you know, and have a meeting at seven o'clock one night, you know, something if we needed it to read.
Absolutely.
So whatever you guys want to do is fine. Um, so as you guys are aware, Burgum lifted the emergency declaration. National Guard is still active um, as we're moving to the recovery phase. And, um, I guess I have one more thing I wanted to hand out to you guys. So this is just what fiscal year last year looked like. Just for your guys'. So we did pretty well, I think in my mind. It costed only nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, ninety-four cents to have public health with our own income, our own expenditures. Year to date this year, we are at for spending forty-one thousand and for income are at fifty-one five. So.
So that, that the deficit spending, do you, do we have a fund we're gonna kick that out of?
That's the regular public health.
Okay.
This is, this, yeah, this deficit is with my salary, everything involved. Um, so I, I mean, that's, we got a great amount of money back from flu shots from all of our clinics, things like that. Um, a little bit of what came over. So this year we're at forty-one thousand for spending fifty-one five. While part of that from December's reimbursement request came in January. So I think that's why we're seeing that ten thousand plus right now. So we're probably sitting about even. But it's just the fiscal year it ended up on.
Catherine, what's EPR?
EPR is our emergency preparedness. So, um, that basically is every year you get that. Um, and that typically three percent of my time would go into that, um.
State funding or?
It's state funding. Yep. But EPR has been down because we've been using COVID response money.
Was there more COVID money coming? They were talking.
So we have three more grants that I have a meeting next week about. There is several million sitting there coming to public health. Um, they're trying to figure out how to put them together, hopefully so we don't have to write for three different grants. Um, next week I'll find out more on actual funding. But I, it sounds like through twenty twenty-two for sure. But then there's a lot more funding coming to get regular vaccines up again. So, um, I think we'll see a pretty large amount.
So are, are they talking about booster shots?
That's, yeah, the general fund. Are you mean with COVID?
Yeah.
They haven't talked about it yet. They're still monitoring that. I haven't heard for sure what they want to do with it.
Okay. Will you let us know on the, the grounds coming up?
Mm-hmm. I'll send out an email as soon as I get the actual dollar amounts and things like that. And when I'm done with that meeting next week, I'll give you guys an update. It's a health equity vaccination supplement and an ELC reopening schools grants. They're all coming. So just how they decide to fund those out.
Do you think there will be a booster this fall?
I'm hoping not. But I really don't know because they're still seeing people that have had the shots have immunities. So I just really don't know.
Yeah.
Feel like it's a shot in the dark there. And next month for the meeting, I will be gone. If you guys want to call me in at some point, I'll be in Bismarck. Six hour update there that I have to be at. So yeah, if you guys want me on just Emily, show me a text and I'll phone in.
Okay. Any other questions for Catherine?
No.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not meeting today, are we? Catherine?
Nope. It's actually supposed to be next month. So I'll have to look at rescheduling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we moved the HR department updates.
Wayne, you want to go?
Yep.
Do you have a department update this month? I know, but you usually give a department update.
Oh, let's see. So we're following pretty much the trend that everybody else is following. Um, our mental illness calls are up a lot. Especially this time of year. We've been dealing a lot with mental illness. We've been dealing with a lot more domestics. Kind of like everybody else in the States been dealing with all around us and um, we did hit some burglary season came. Which I always say we have two seasons. We have summer and burglary season. So, um, we did have a little bit of that. Uh, we've taken care of a lot of those already or they're on the works. We've recovered a lot of stolen stuff from all over the place. All to multiple counties we're working with on that.
All to multiple counties we're working with on that. What else have we been up to? A lot more drug cases. We're seeing that more and more, I guess. Um, also people that are kind of passing through more than our than our people. And mostly in the rural area are defined over nowhere. About it, we're just uh. Day by day, seems like we've been, we've been pretty busy off and on, so. Rick had a very busy weekend I had with him. Last weekend, Friday and Sunday, Sunday was a mess for him. So um, again, mental illness won't sit out on Sunday too different, he's dealing, so. But all in all, we're getting through it, so.
Yeah, I was.
Time people are very, very hard to find, so. Thank goodness we've got. One that can work a lot, so that helps us, but.
How about all your vehicles, are they?
Vehicles are running fine. Uh, we're getting used to the P cards. I think we got the. I think the first month was a success for us after we had a little oops in there and none of us could fill up. Um, but I think she took care of that problem for us, so. So we kept our old cards just in case something happens like that again. So I, so we'll see how the P card can go. It's the first month it went okay, so other than a little oops in between them.
You're in a budget for a new vehicle list?
Yeah, budget for one new pickup, yeah. It'll have approximately a hundred thousand miles on it. Approximately. The summer is gonna be. That's sure is really nice to have almost every weekend off, I'm not gonna lie to you, and this year it's, we already have five events, first two. First two in June are taken care of and the first three in July are taken care of, so we're prepping for all that stuff for. We expect to have a pretty big crowds of some of our stuff coming up. We started up in June with thinly days. Yeah, that's gonna take a weekend for us. That's gonna be very busy and then uh. Of course, the fourth, you know what that's like for us, a lot of the lake, we've been and all over. We've been busy all over for the fourth, but most of it's concentrated in the lake area. So we'll put extra guys on for that day as well for a couple of days. Uh, then the next weekend is Sharon's having her one twenty fifth. Most of that's on Saturday, a little bit on Friday, so we'll. Get that done and move right into Hope Days the next weekend, so. We've been planning and I've been helping them guys plan some of their stuff. I've actually stopped to uh. Stefan and uh. A lot of things happen there and we haven't really been covered sometimes for. For uh, emergency responders in the county, so I'm working with Stefan to make sure there's at least a EMT or. If the ambulance can't be there, that's fine, but at least there's a, an EMT at all those events. Um, so he's working on that, trying to fill spots on his schedule for his people. To make sure some of those events are, the lake scares me when we, you know, there's three, four thousand people out there for a couple of days and. If we're tied up with a bad accident, we got nobody else to take a EMS call, we try to get people there, but. Um, so hopefully he can work that out for us as well, so we'll have a, an EMT at all these events. Including uh, three days at Golden Lake. It's to be someone actually staged out there for us. So that's kind of what we're doing.
So as Joe County, are they taking prisoners in the jails and stuff?
Not yet, but they're getting ready to open, so um, the sheriff over there, Steve, is uh. He have a big jail. Uh, thing coming up, I think it's, he said it was at the nineteenth. So uh, of this month, and then so he was hoping maybe to open up by by. First of June or there, but. So that will help us a lot. We actually have a a couple of people that were supposed to spend some. Ten or twenty days in jail type of thing and. It's very difficult. No jails are taken. That's, that is a big problem right now. We've gotten lucky. Truck on it, we've had, they've had to pull him down to Wapertown and over to Dallas Lake and. His grandfather, the father have been full. I don't really want to take these weekend guys, so. Got lucky, they're just going on the home monitoring stuff for them, which they had to pay for, we don't pay for.
Would you be able to use Vallet City when it's open?
Probably. I haven't had any conversation with them yet, but I don't think that'd be much of a problem, especially for females, I'm hoping. That's where we come in the big problem. It's true, only holds no female, it's only males.
Oh.
In their facility, so so strictly adult based.
Well, there's sure a lot of big stuff going on down there.
When that Steve gets it open, he wanted to make sure all his dispatchers, jailers and everybody was. That needed, that wanted or needed the. For the vaccination and get it, and they're all done with that now. So now the next step is just their, their big uh. Audit they have for their jail to make sure everything is gonna go smoothly and uh. If they don't have to change a lot of stuff, he was open by June, but.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's got very, I'm assuming that very sensitive for true coming to be all persons all over the place, an extra guy. Ex-persons over the day.
Yeah.
They've been down so a little bit too. Um, they got one leave, like training and a new person, they have nothing going on in medical, so they're true, they're busy. Uh, we are now actually helping Griggs a little bit. The sheriff over there's family got sick with COVID, his dad's not very well. And so Wesley's been in Minneapolis trying to help his family, so we're kind of helping with Griggs a little bit right now. Get them through this and so.
Yeah, well, that works.
Yep, they gotta help each other.
Yep.
So they help us, we are helping.
They do, yep.
So we got pretty good neighbors between the, for the sheriff's department, we all, three of us get along. Super great, so.
That's great, yeah. Okay.
Any else?
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Jenny?
All right, so I don't have too many updates. Um, just kind of update you on the courtroom courtroom technology that they're kind of working on. Trying to get us more set up for Zoom based in case if you know there is. Another outbreak with COVID or if we don't have a judge app can come in. They are not sure when that's gonna be complete, but kind of trying to keep us in the loop. Um, the only other thing that's really changed in my office is just having Aurora now. I just have her Wednesday, Fridays, so she can help down in public health a little bit more. Well, one of the major things I want to talk about today is I have maternity leave coming up. And I've kind of talked to Emily a few times, kind of trying to get something set in stone. Wondering what your guys' thoughts would be from for me working from home. I have talked to Travis and he can get me fully set up from home. I have my printers, scanners. I would not have the phone capabilities, but auditor's office has said they could take my phones and then. Like send me an email or a text message and then I'd call the individual right back. The only thing would have come up is some of, someone needed to come in for a restraining order. If they came in, I'm only seven miles out, I'll just pack up, come in and. Get that restraining order to go just because that is an immediate need, but. Otherwise, everything on the recorder side, clerk side, I can do fully from home while I'm on leave. And then Aurora is gone for, did we figure out what day she was gone? I think June fourteenth until the twenty seventh, she's on vacation. So then if I'm working from home, we can still have someone. Not recording, if filing for the clerk's side. Then we do not have court in June, but I will come in for court in July and. Then we won't have court calling back in office in the end of August.
No court in May?
We do have court in May, but I'll still be here for that. So I was talking to Travis and just with. Prior pregnancies, I tend to go quite a bit early. So I was hoping to get set up at home like that second week of June, first week of June, just in case if something was that there's no rush, right? When I get home, everything's set up, ready to go. Just because I don't want court documents sitting and something getting missed or, you know, we tell. On the recorder side, we tell people seven to fourteen days to have a document back, but I try to stay on that. Underside and have it back within a week. So that way, you know, if for some reason I did have the baby, the second week of June, I'm already set up at home and. When I get home, everything's. You know, we don't run into any technical issues, getting it all set up with IT and stuff like that, but.
So what would be the cost for to get set up, do you know?
Nothing, it would just be like a twenty five dollar cable. That we have. Uh, my computers, printers, everything would just come from my desk, set it up at home, just kind of like Michelle did with COVID. Set it up like that and. There should be no cost for it, just. And I think we probably have an extra cable in the office that I can use to. Put in, so probably nothing.
What'd you figure out with phones?
The phones, they never to tell me what the cost would be, but. I think Harley said it was fairly reasonable. So like we wanted to transfer to my cellphone, I'm. Fine with that.
When, when she mentioned to me, just they'll say maternity leave, um, we discussed the phones, what would happen with those? So right now, the only phone system set up and forward somewhere was the sheriff's office. I think it's only like five bucks a month or so, it's not a lot. Um, the other option, like I told Jenny, is, you know, it sounds great to do. In, in like person right now, but when you have a baby, I'm sure you're not gonna want the random phone calls or not even for your office. Whatnot, you know, so. As if we'd be willing, you know, we answer the phone when they step away or out now, we could always answer and then email or text. And get apples apart and call somebody back. That's the option also.
And Aurora will be in office Wednesday, Fridays, when she gets back from. That, from her vacation, so there's two days that would be off and.
So if we let you guys have the phone, do you, you this year the phone, then you draw their office and I'll take it.
It transfers to their.
Over and over here, it's not picked up over there.
Other, the other thing about being at home and like the documents, is there's documents that.
That are like private kind of?
Yeah.
So the only thing would be, would be like a restraining order or a passport, but I would come into office to do those. Um, and passports, we already set up appointments because they're a little bit lengthier process. So I could either, you know, I've talked to Aurora, we could set them up Wednesday, Fridays. If that doesn't work for someone, I would just come in and help them with that. Um, otherwise, recording documents, they are public knowledge. So what my plan is, is, you know, I'm still bringing my kids to daycare when I'm on leave, so. When I bring them in, I check the mail, grab all the mail, take it home, get documents recorded. And then Wednesdays and Fridays, I'd leave them for Aurora to validate because we always have two eyes go on. Um, and then she would just put them in for the mail and they would go out, so that would be. Good there. Otherwise, court documents normally are um, sent through file and serve, so that's electronic and that would come up right up on my computer, so. And then Travis said we'd have all the same security and IT as we would here. He can get like a temporary thing to have that set up for my house, so. And then it would just go off my wireless, but. It's not.
Sounds like it's covered.
Sounds like it's all planned. It's good.
I just don't want to leave, you know, a lot of stuff on Aurora or then, you know, someone need help, needs help in the county and. She's not there, something like that. I like to have that covered. Makes it easier when I come back too, so everything's still in. Working order, not left behind, but.
So when are you gonna start doing this then or?
I would think the first week of June, second week of June, probably at the latest, just with um, the chance of me going early. Just so that, like I said, it's all set up. If something like that does happen, then we don't have to try. Rush and then there's that leg in the backend to have it all set up, but.
When is your due date?
I'm due the twenty seventh of June. They're thinking. Probably actually a week ahead of that and I normally go quite a bit early, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Those last two weeks of June are kind of the concern, I'd say, because she probably will be out.
Mm-hmm.
And Aurora will be on vacation.
Yep, and that's why it'd be nice to have it set up beginning of June, so it's all set up, all good to go. There's not.
Right.
Any rushing or.
It'd be probably a good idea also to come up with some sort of. Something to put out to the public for walk-in people.
Yeah.
For people who just need to come here. If Aurora's not here and you're not here, just that we uncover all faces for them. Not just.
Yeah, the only, so we don't get too many people bring in recorder side stuff. A lot of that comes through the mail, sometimes we do, but. Um, like if we had a drop box, I could put outside the office, I can always check that. Um. Otherwise, she'll, yeah, she'll be here Wednesday, Thursday. She's across the hall on Tuesday, so she did say she could watch, you know. If someone does come to the office, she would see them, but so it'd just be that Monday. Thursday. That would be looking at to kind of figure out a plan for walk-ins, but.
Or we could post Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever day she's over there.
Is that something we can put like on the county site? And I can let um, court administrators know too. I'll have to update them once everything's good to go. And they'll put it on their site too for that the clerk of court will be open like Wednesday, Fridays, but.
Okay.
Since the courthouse has been open, have you had more walk-in?
Not really.
Yeah.
Um, every so often we'll have someone come in, but it's really just for us to look at a. Reporting to make sure it meets requirements and then we take it, but. I think maybe two, three at that. Um, otherwise. I've had a couple restraining orders or divorces come in. When those come in, I get an email prior. To kind of make sure we're here and kind of what forms they need to use, so.
Okay.
Pretty much know all those ahead of time.
It's not a lot, does it?
Yeah, no. What was that? Oh, I know. They'll be here soon. Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have, but I don't know if you guys have any questions or.
I don't think so. If you could, just let us know when you're. Going.
Okay, yeah, I'll touch base with Travis too and see when would be the best time to. You know, get everything set up and then. I can send out an email to everybody if that works.
Yeah, perfect, sounds good.
All right.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I need to take a quick break.
Okay, I've made motion for a five minute recess. Hello? Hi.
Did he take his mic off?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's something harsh, barky?
Heard what?
Hersh, barky. Somebody's got a barky dog. It was in there.
Okay, I can, I can get it.
It didn't sit there.
Yeah, layering, layering.
I think shoot the stuff's going on. Your voice gotta get.
Well, just call it, we'll just go with that. It's just about everything that's on there.
I'll show you one.
Yeah, oh, we got a whole bunch of ten dollar plywood for you too. Yeah, good luck. All right, I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Sounds like there was a big price for it. Maybe that's the big question. These are, but I'll give that to Catherine. Definitely, yeah, bring it up with review with the door.
I turned my mouth off. Been busy? Even with the price of lumber up?
I am. Wow.
Really? Well, that's good.
I love you to go once that bell's now. But wait, it's so stupid. Nobody, nobody can understand. Nobody can understand why.
You know? Yeah, I heard stuff like that. Yeah. You know, that's pretty good. Well, I heard too that they said that lumber prices might not even straighten out till like July next year. Twenty twenty two, they said, you know, so.
Right now, the average is around twelve hundred dollars. Right now, the average is around twelve hundred dollars per four foot. Thousand board feet area. Where normally around three or four hundred. And they think that the futures for like November are in the nine hundred to thousand. But that's a guess. So.
Thank you.
I was thinking it would come to a split stop. One of these days when the people had enough. Cause the bank's gotta be. How do you get out a loan for a house that costs three hundred fifty thousand dollars in appraisers for two eighty?
Yeah, exactly.
Hey Mike. I just think it's off. Yeah, I know, we're just bringing it back.
Wapping in this?
I have no idea. I lost track.
To put in the outlets or the vaccine cooler. Now, the bill has not only that, but it has these charges. Catherine just told Carly that if they put in this, they have to put in these two. So.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Okay, good morning. Now we'll call a meeting back to order. It is nine thirteen. Angie, how are you?
Good, good. So I guess um, just going through a, an update of our last quarter. So the January, February and March months, uh, Amber and I did email you a copy of our narrative back on April fifteenth. So I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at that. Um, it had some pretty cool, the plus side of COVID and having to go virtual is we've done a lot of virtual video type programming. And so um, you'll actually be able to see us teaching in action in a lot of the programs that we've worked on within this past quarter. So if you've had a chance, we are certainly glad to print you some hard copies, but wanted to send you that one via email. So you could click on the links and, and watch us doing our, doing our teaching in action. So we had a pretty big quarter, last quarter, going through um, some of the workshops and trainings on the pesticide side of things. I certified just about ninety, recertified about ninety of our um, Steel County pesticide applicators. So that went really well. Uh, we did one virtual right away because at that time with COVID, things were still pretty restricted. So we did an online training in February with about seventy applicators that really uh, we weren't, we weren't sure how that was gonna go because everybody, as you guys have learned, you know, online is very different versus face to face. We like that face to face interaction. But we had some really good participation and, and respondents on that. And then for those that preferred a face to face training, we had about twenty individuals come to the training I had here in Finley at the end of March. So we were able to get everybody caught up and, and, and where they're supposed to be on that. Amber, do you have any comments on, on your quarter?
Uh, I put out programming virtually called the NERIS system. So there's, there's thirteen different classes that are being offered that started in March. So until September, I will be putting two classes out a month and that's virtual. Into it and I have quite a few for all counties that I serve. So that I'm getting through that program. And then helping with pesticide trainings. I did do some.
So yeah, it's been a good active quarter. Um, as you probably have heard, either TV, news, radio, whatever. Uh, we are in a drought. I, I'm very cautious when I use the D word just because um, in our county, I, I, I really do feel we've got good subsoil moisture at this time. Um, once the crop gets going, things are gonna change if we don't start seeing some more preset, but um, we've seen some pretty good crop emergence so far, just because we've had um, much better moisture reserves than, than what is thought to be there. So every week, um, we have a, a drought meeting across the state and then also uh, we report in as county extension agents in each county. We report in the, 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 the growing conditions. And so um, we kind of have a pretty big part in, in looking at that drought, drought monitor map. So. Are there any questions on, on the last quarter? Okay. Um, the next thing that Amber and I wanted to kind of provide an update on is our administrative assistant position. Um, we, Amber and I have put quite a bit of time in looking at putting together an updated uh, job description of just kind of highlighting and outlining some of the tasks that this individual would be, would be doing. And we kind of put together um, a proposal that really looks at, um, looks at what we have left with this year's budget. And so just, just crunching some numbers here. Um, since we, we've had it, had this position open so far, we've got about ten thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars in our administrative assistant line item within our budget. And we would like to um, put out a job post and, and consider uh, hiring somebody. And this is just our ballpark. So Amber, please feel free to chime in if I'm missing something, but we were kind of thinking with that reserve we have left over. If we would look at maybe hiring someone at about seventeen dollars an hour at twenty-two we, hours a week, that would be about three hundred and seventy-four dollars a week. And within this year, there's twenties, roughly twenty-seven weeks left. And so three hundred and seventy-four dollars per week times twenty-seven weeks gets us to ten thousand ninety-eight dollars. So just.
And that would be a July first hire date.
Correct, correct.
And I have a question, Emily, cause we don't have the benefit thing. Is the benefits part of our budget? Or is that county budget? Like, how is that figured in?
Right, you don't. It is part of the county.
With twenty-two hours, is that figured?
This is all new to me. I mean, so.
Yeah, this is just a, a ballpark, trying to figure out using what we have left to eventually because, you know, budgets, preliminary budgets are due next week. And so we wanted to visit with you on what you thought were some options to, if, if we could, if we could finish out the year with this route and consider either keeping it that way, budgeting for that type, this type of route for next year, or with the possibility of increasing. Um, we just wanted to, that, that's kind of where we're at is we've updated the job description. Um, and as we've talked to you guys before, would like to, would like to increase hours because it's just, we definitely need, need some more administrative help in that office.
So what was the previous hours, the last job?
The previous hours was, was fifteen.
For a week?
Yes, correct.
So salary alone would be an increase of seven thousand five fourteen hopefully, without any addition. No, just from her budget. The budget um, for that position is eleven thousand nine thirty-four currently. So the seventeen dollars an hour, twenty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks is nineteen four four eight. What you guys came up with?
We haven't really looked at the full yet. This would just be finished off.
This is just to finish the current.
But for budgeting for next year, that's, that's what. Just to give them an idea.
What was it? Twenty-two dollars, like a proposal and the dollar amount? Do you have to figure any taxes or anything else? There's no benefits in that, is there?
We've previously not given benefits to that. Um, you did change it with Dina. The previous, what was the previous person making fifteen something? There's still.
We think that it was like fifteen thirty.
Yeah.
So if you put this position out and for some reason we couldn't do the twenty-two hours next year, would you tell that to whoever you hired or?
I mean, we'd have to be very upfront with that person to know that.
I'm looking at the handbook. It says, uh, a regular employee who works over twenty hours would qualify for benefits. But not necessarily paid. It would qualify, yes. Single policy. Here is, my only concern is some of that goes back to looking at all the offices that we discussed last month. So. That's what I sent you guys out after the meeting last month. Just all of what we're having, what we're just sending. The new buyers and others.
So you wanna answer on this today or?
Well, budgets are due, well, we'd like to have an ad, you know, get advertised for this position. So I mean, we need to if you guys are okay with our proposal of, you know, with the remaining funds we have doing twenty-two hours a week at seventeen dollars. And then, you know, with budgets due next week or so for twenty twenty-two, I guess we need to have an idea in terms of, you know, what, what you would be comfortable allowing.
I, if I have time, I can come up with some numbers for the other end of it too. I just wasn't prepared for that.
No, that's okay. That's, this is all preliminary to try and get just some ideas going and and get what, use what we have so far to finish out the year.
I think uh, we kind of need to figure something out for, for this. So we can proceed with what they want to do or or so they can proceed forward to find somebody to fill that. Either we go back to the same way it was, we look for somebody that way, or we look at something like they're proposing here. So we can put this to bed.
So you got on the paper here, you got twenty-two weeks left. Well, there's half a year left, so that'd be twenty-six in my math.
We're looking at a start date of July first.
Well, that's yeah, July first. That's six months, yeah. Well, that's, you know, fifty-two weeks in a year. That's twenty-six and six one three.
Well, you may need to adjust my hours to like twenty hours a week or something. I don't, I, I know you need help in your office, so. We need to figure out by today, what they're, I mean, so they can get going on it. I had to have a July first. A lot of those other ones that are on there, they're probably getting benefits as well. Full benefits, this is non, no benefits.
Some of them are getting benefits. Yes, some are not. Some are partial.
So you think you're gonna have some pretty qualified applicants for this or?
I would hope so. I know the last time, you know, when we hired Crystal, it took a very long time to just cause it's short hours and not benefited.
Stop the fine people.
People don't wanna work.
So what do we need to figure out here if, if, if that extra, if, if we keep somebody on a full year, it's gonna cost an extra how much? And we need a budget for that or, or what's the process here?
Right, you need to determine if you guys are approving the additional hours. Um, the higher wage start benefits, all of the above.
Yeah, I guess the first step is, is are you interested in, in saying yes or tweaking our proposal to finish out the current twenty twenty-one year? And then helping us, you know, decide for twenty twenty-two with budgets due within the next week, what's, what we can.
I myself would be good to advertise as eighteen to twenty-two hours a week. If you saved two hours a week for twenty-two, that's roughly thirty-five hundred bucks, just in case. You guys, what do you, what do you?
Well, they get fifteen hours a week right now, right? Two days, right?
Well, however, she managed, we get chooses to manage them.
Right. Before, before Crystal left, what we were doing is we were having her bank some hours. So she would work twelve hours a week. So we would have we were banking hours because we need somebody for achievement days in, in August. So we're collecting hours. So that way we could at least have her a full week down in Hope with us.
All that way.
Prior to her, it was Renee as needed.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a special person, the veteran. It's gonna be tough to find somebody for that position. Be somewhat flexible with things. What do you guys wanna do? Let's get moving here.
N D S U can help out?
Nope. N D S U is responsible for agent salaries and Nope, NDSU is responsible for agent salaries and a hundred percent of our benefits. And then the county pays for the remaining fifty percent of our salary and a hundred percent operating costs, which includes. Admin support staff.
You could advertise it, I mean, if you guys aren't really ready to commit. You could advertise it, like you said, with a, a range of hours and not put the starting wage, and you can discuss that. At interview time with the person, depending on their qualifications and ability, experience.
Yeah, and we kind of talked to neighboring counties to see what their admin systems were being paid with roughly seventeen, so that's.
Crystal started out at fifteen?
Yeah, it was fifteen thirty or something.
Fifteen, and then she got the raise into the new year, so. And Renee was fifteen. So, my only concern, we discussed wages at our last meeting, and that's what I passed out to them, is where everybody was sitting. And recommended they looked at all the departments and wages, you know, obviously it would. Maybe entice somebody from a different department to apply down there, or, you know. You'd get some hurt feelings by employees that have been here several years and that person's making more, so. Just all things that I look at from the HR end of it.
Well, maybe we should just, you know, see what the end of the year brings and go from there, you know? See what we get as far as people apply and move forward.
Go from there, finish your year out, and if they want to, yeah, go forward, that's what they go forward.
Well, I think if Amber and Angie think this person is a good fit, you know, for the following year, you know, maybe we have to, you know.
Well, they need help.
Do something extra.
Let's, let's get, let's put. No, you're fine. I think it's a good proposal. I think we, just like Russell said, we go. Through the end of the year here, see, hopefully you guys can find somebody good you like, and then, you know, we gotta figure that out. Of how we're gonna do this into the, into the next budget here. But yeah, we gotta figure this out, so.
That was gonna be my second question, so how would you guys propose we budget for that position for twenty twenty-two?
Does NDSU want to help pay for anything next year, or would they pay for any?
So the way, like, the way it's written in, in century code with that is, like I said, NDSU pays. Half of Amber and I's salary and a hundred percent of our benefits, and then counties pay the remaining fifty percent of salary. And a hundred percent operating, so all of the, the office space, the, the support staff that we're talking about. Printing costs, that's, anything, anything operational, that's, that's the county's responsibility, so that includes the support staff.
So, so you would just have to budget that in your. And whether or not we can.
Right, so that's.
Decide that a bunch of times, whether we can make that work for us an extra.
Okay, so that's where I was just wondering, because they're due next week, I, I guess I'm not sure what we should budget for.
Just budget it. Like a proposal, and then we'll just have to go from there, whether we can do that amount or.
Okay, that's, that's. No, that's, that's fair to do, so.
So, we're gonna let her go ahead and advertise the way it sounds, right, and then. Put in their range of hours, say fifteen to twenty-two hours, and a salary amount of. Yeah, it'd have to be anywhere from fifteen to seventeen, I like. No benefits. Everybody good with that? Brandon, do you hear them?
Yep, that'll work. That, that works fine.
Hopefully you can find a good.
No, thank you for discussing it and going through it with us, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Excellent.
Looks like you've been busy, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm excited to announce the North Dakota Stockman's Association, they have their annual spring roundup meetings across the state. And Steel County is hosting our region's district meeting this year, and I've been asked to speak, so that covers about. Oh golly, I think our district is like twenty-some counties, so we're pretty excited, we're gonna have a pretty. Pretty good-sized group coming to Hope on June third, so.
Good, good.
Where do you hold that at?
That's gonna be at the Legion. Any other thoughts, comments?
Like the stuff you send us on the different extension agents across the state.
Oh, that newsletter? That's good to know, because I kind of helped curate that, so. Good, thank you, I'm glad you subscribe.
Chili is chili.
I agree.
It's a chili.
Awesome. Well, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna let you guys go and carry on with your day.
Thank you, keep up the good work.
Where's Reed at?
Oh, that's what I spoke to this.
You want one? You got one extra for Emily?
Period. K R B come in. Lower on kind of road ten, one and nine. And then Lake Side to come in lowest on corner of twelve, sixteen and twenty. Total bid done gravel for thirty-four total miles, seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars. Oh, a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars on the gravel. So it leaves us for spot gravel one. Twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty. Then include putting back into our stop fire. We laid out there for you for.
And how many miles are you gonna gravel with her?
I have ten right now.
Which ones are you grabbing?
Hundred and six south of, of both. Yeah. I'm gonna do that there on a lake's pit, that's down there, that, that last stuff that he put up.
That where at?
Like from here, Washburn, just straight to the east.
I think, well, I think that's, it's Irish land, I don't, there's a great big piles down there now.
Yeah, it's pretty good stuff.
Who put that up then? Four Irish sent. Okay.
Um, then we're gonna gravel that one mile pavement that was ground up. That needs to be gravelled, because it's getting to be where. There's no, it needs some product, needs some gravel.
Yeah, the Blaven Road.
You're talking about the mile north of Hope.
Oh, yeah, okay, on nine. I was thinking the Blaven Road, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, just right next to the edge of town there. It's really pretty flat, I mean, and they don't dare cut it, because we're down into where we can start going pieces up, and we don't want to do that.
Hey, are you grabbing anything else?
Corner of four, there's some sections in there that we need to gravel. That we're gonna gravel, out of here. You know, that's close, either that or if we're up at.
Make a motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Motion made by Brian, second by Ted, all in favor? I'm gonna abstain, all in favor.
In favor?
Yeah, it's time to hit the outlaps. Motion carried.
Then. I just want to ask you guys again, what your thoughts are. When the courthouse goes on their summer hours, just wondering if my guys would be able also. Be able to get up at noon on. On that, when they go on to their summer hours, and we go back to our hours. You know, just like we need to, we'll go back to our normal hours.
You're supposed to work fifty hours in the summer, aren't you?
The courthouse changes the summer hours on June first, so that's your next meeting day.
That's just me.
Three on Friday.
How many hours is that done?
Forty-seven and a half.
Last year you guys approved them going to three o'clock on Fridays.
So then Reed, you guys, you guys are working twelve-hour days then?
Ten-hour days, yes.
Ten-hour days.
Ten-hour days? How much, how much productivity are you getting from new, from, on Friday from noon to three?
Well, they're starting to wind down, you know, but. If, if there's something necessary that we need to do, I mean, I, we, I've had guys come in giving on a Saturday when we get a call. And stuff, so it ain't like we're, I'm not here. We, we address the problems right away, even if we get a call on Saturday.
What do you, what do you guys want to do? So go to newer, do you want to think about it till our next meeting, noon first?
So just to reiterate here, you're supposed to be working fifty hours a week?
We had him working fifty hours a week before, and last year we, we let him. Let him get up at three o'clock. On Fridays.
They're just losing their overtime.
Guys know they're getting three hours less than their paycheck, I guess it's up to them. But.
So then.
Say that again?
Are we doing three hours, he's salaried, so then they'd be getting. He's, he's budgeted for forty-seven and a half dollars a week. And we take three hours off a week.
Yeah, I know what you mean. He should be a trickle-down effective, same way.
Does Reed get overtime?
He doesn't, he's a straight salary.
His wage was.
He's just, he's just, he's just straight salary.
Forty in the winter and fifty in the summer.
Emily, you run that from June first to September, Labor Day, your summer hours?
The courthouse, right, for Memorial Day.
Well, I don't think it's a big deal. I think these guys have done a great job over the last two years, I've had nothing but compliments on them. And I'd like to reward them with it. That's just me.
That's your motion?
I'll make that a motion if you guys want.
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
Second by Russell, all in favor?
I got a good comment the other day, Reed, from, some people are on town, farmers and stuff today, where you did those bridges. Said that's the smoothest, those bridges have ever, ever been, they said.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like you to tell your guys too, that, thanks for that.
Trying, trying to do a good job for you guys.
Thanks, tell your guys, thanks also for helping clean up the basement. Later, but. We had a good turnout, cleaning the basement up, Reed's guys got all the stuff carried out. Everybody was here cleaning the basement, and we moved a lot of stuff out of there.
Are we having a sale?
May sometimes, isn't it?
When? End of May?
A lot of stuff went to garbage, I think there was two dump truck loads. There was a lot of stuff down there that didn't need to be down here.
It didn't need to be there, that's, that's good.
We needed one person to say yes.
Oh, and who was that? Was he dead?
What was all done, so.
Well, if it's been there forever, you know, how long do we have to keep it?
All right, what else do you got, Reed?
That's what I've got.
Your motor grader, that'll be here, maybe.
End of May, that's the last I've heard, unless it falls off the ship.
You mean, it's, it's not made in the USA? John, do you hear? We really goofed up, huh? Say, no, they're not going out of business. There was, you're full of activity. Run one of them dumb joysticks things. Yeah.
We, we did five, plus pull, pull that one out, uh, redeck the top boards, like this one up by Listy's up here. Uh, there was probably a half inch more off the driving course up there. We tried to, there was a couple of bad boards. So we took even confused them and tried to do that, and they still stuck that taller, I remember it said, robot old deck.
Yeah.
I mean, so that's what we're doing.
Takes, it takes some work.
The driving lane there in the Lundberg Bridge, that was only a ten foot driving lane before with gravel on both sides of it, so the gravel's just added weight to the bridge. We went about to twenty-two feet of, of driving lane now on it, so, I mean, it looked. It looks more presentable when you're coming at it down the hill, you know, with the truck in, like our tractors and stuff like that, they're all wide now and stuff. So now there's support.
That one right, just a half or quarter mile from six on the end of six, that one goes to the east. I told John to better get the gravel off that. They got so much gravel on that bridge and. Well, I think the bridge deck is getting bad, and I said, no, it's all the gravel you get off the side. You want me to tell Reed? No, I'll, I'll go get it off while he hasn't gotten it off yet.
We're, and that's what we're gonna be doing too, is, uh, removing the decks off, especially the wood decks.
Yeah.
The steel, the, the concrete ones is not as bad.
No.
That they, but the, the wood over time, I mean. That part Tony has gravel over every bridge, all their, then every couple of years, then they fill the gravel lot and then inspect the boards and then put it.
Yeah.
Maybe by widening that Lundberg Bridge, maybe you, uh, wasn't a very good idea because now they'll take anything across it, you know? Well, before they kind of were hesitant about going across it cuz it was kind of narrow.
I don't know, you mean, if people really got a lot, look at, most people don't know what that sign means, you know, the weight restriction, really.
You're right.
Oh, guy could be informative too. I've told a lot of these farmers that have knocked down their signs. I said, if you knock them down at the combine header, that bridge is grounds for being closed right then and there, if them signs are down. Really? I go, yeah, that's why them signs are up there, cuz they're telling you not to go across them. I mean, cuz you, you gotta be under these tractor tractors that are all, I mean, they're. Certain time, they're all on top of that bridge, so that's not a good thing. But they don't, uh, they just laugh about it until they go through. It's sad.
But. All right, anything else for Reed?
Nope.
Thanks for updating.
You're doing good, Reed.
Thanks, Reed.
Got everyone?
What are they?
So. Just following along with the, uh, bridge. And August, I guess, so after the meeting today at some point. Just call for it on eleven and try and make a decision to get that one going. Uh. You have on your federal aid program sheet, you have bridges scheduled for construction in twenty-two. So I guess that's my question today, if you guys are interested in, uh, proceeding with those. The problem is at this point, and the bridge inspection process is not complete, so they don't have the new load ratings out. So they're still struggling with it, it was just going a bit. So exactly how we wanna deal with this, the problem is, is if we don't get going pretty soon, it's gonna be pretty tough to build that in twenty-two. Just because of the environmental hurdles that you have to go through with some of these things.
What ones were they?
So why don't I pass around, I made a copy of one of the maps that we use previously. I set around a couple of red clouds around the two that you have previously selected. So what the DOT is recommending now is that you try and do, if they're gonna be box cover projects, we anticipate these would be, that you try and do two at a time. There's just an awful lot of cost savings, you can do more than.
Have you heard of any other counties bidding with other county together?
Together with other counties? No, I don't see that very often.
I, uh, Grand Force County did some of that, I think, this year.
Who does they?
Walsh.
That happens to know that, so, I'm gonna, certainly something that you can do, um. I don't know.
I don't know if it's a cost savings or not, that's.
It depends on, I, I suppose if they're close to the county lines or something.
For mobilization, I would think that would help that.
I, I mean, part of your question becomes if you're gonna try and do two bridges at the same time, beginning forward.
Right.
Your local share costs two bridges at a time.
Is one of these bridges worse than the other?
Uh, not necessarily. I think they're both posted, but.
That one in Golden Lake, that's up by. I know what to call it on. By who?
Southwest of Waldo.
Oh, okay, yep.
Was it another one by Joel Andersons?
Yeah, he's, or west of Joel Andersons.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, there's two of them right in that area.
But, uh, we'd estimated, you know, five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand.
Each?
Each.
And that's, they're both pipes. But all box covers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we do and anticipate. I don't see any reason why they couldn't be. You're talking, uh, you know, your drainage jerrys are around fifty square miles, so that's not really true. Any input for a big box cover, it's in nowadays, can still be a less than average project. So the DOT has it on schedule to be bid in February of twenty-twenty-two. Now, keep in mind, of course, that we still have your, uh. Connor Road eleven overlay scheduled for, uh, November twenty-one, twenty-one construction.
And also the Connor, Connor Road five bridge as well?
Well, the Connor Road five is gonna depend on if FEMA are at, through FEMA or not.
Have we heard more on that yet?
No, so we submitted our, our applications, um, the nice steps is what we would fold is that, that we have FEMA reach the engineer contact money. To talk through some of the projects, but, um, they haven't done that yet, I assume, so. We're probably at very preliminary stages still when it comes to Denver. Uh, reason being is because they've also had a lot of turnover in November, region eight, uh, especially with COVID, and people working from home. Defense are almost one hundred percent working from home, the offices that have that basically can't. So, um, whether that's good, bad, or otherwise, they also don't have the people to do near what they have to do, so. We expect an answer, uh, hopefully this summer, we expect some sort of response, but we're not scared of either response either. So, uh, a lot of times they just bypass it, they had a good report, in my opinion, uh, so they might just bypass their questions if they don't have any, and just give us the determination, the act of determination will happen until. November, I think, at the earliest this year. That bridge project at the earliest wouldn't be until twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, I, I guess I become skeptical, they don't decide not funding until November. You can get out for twenty-two to get it. Bid in time in order to be able to construct it in twenty-twenty-two, but that grant is also gonna be fifty percent.
Much?
Seventy-five, seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yeah.
So these, these two bridges that were, or what blocks covers are talking about, uh, there's federal funding for that, right?
Federal funding, yeah.
So what would that match be roughly?
It's eight twenty.
Eighty twenty?
Eighty twenty, yeah. So, uh, there is, there was a fair amount of optimism through the offsetting session. Bring up funds will actually be a reality, but to me, there's, there's really no opportunity for that funding to come out until twenty-twenty-three.
So if we did, if we did both these bridges, it would roughly have come up with three hundred thousand roughly?
Uh, yeah.
If, if they figured six hundred thousand, I think.
So that, that's the question, you get an awful lot of irons in the fire.
Yeah. By myself, I think we don't, we can't do both. Much, I'd rather be a little more conservative than that.
Can't do both as far as these two bridges versus Connor Road. Five bridge or?
No. Well.
So I don't know, Emily, if you've heard anything from North Dakota Association of Counties yet, exactly, uh, the, uh, money that. The additional funding that they're putting into the Highway Distribution Fund, to given any indication yet of what that's gonna mean for counties.
No. For budgeting and stuff this year, not, nothing yet.
Yeah, I figure it's probably two.
The Connor Road five bridge, do we have a rough estimate of that?
Oh, shoot, man, it's been a while since I looked at that. You don't have to call off your handicap.
I think you said it was right along the.
And that, that of course, seven to eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
And it, it depends on.
How much dirt we wanna move?
On how much dirt you wanna move, it was smart as deal.
I think the box, the over itself, I think your estimator is around four hundred and the rest of us.
So that could do, toss this up with two hundred thousand if FEMA came through.
Well, and the FEMA thing is a reimbursement, so we can pay all of it upfront, but yes, we are.
There was also House Bill ten fifteen, which put, uh. Twenty million. Essentially to townships for road and bridge. So I don't know when they call that road and bridge, exactly how the state is gonna look at that as far as how that gets distributed, if part of that money also comes out. To be fitted for bridges, or if that's just strictly township money and they use that for gravel and culverts. But the other thing that is in that bill, it's also a hundred million that went to the DOT. For the DOT to grant for all levels of transportation projects. So the other thing that we'll be watching for is to find out what the rules come out on that, and if there's an opportunity through any of that, that you can apply for a grant. Matching on some of these, so, a couple of different opportunities, you know, the, the bonding bill, of course, at the state level ended up going to the big three water projects.
Connor Road eleven project, what was that estimate?
Uh, the Connor Road eleven project was estimated to, it was a couple of years old, a million and a half.
And that's a.
Paving projects, it just, just depends on what oil, oil's gonna do in the next six months, so.
Sounds like that's gonna go high.
Sounds like it's going up, yeah.
What is our cost share in that? Fifteen percent?
No, um, those projects are eighty twenty.
That one's eighty twenty.
No, no, on that one, the, uh, you didn't have enough money in your federally pot that they're gonna borrow ahead federal funds, yeah. So you should still be twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. He's adding up the numbers.
Yep.
That was just with the overlay on that. That wasn't, that, that, so it was no culverts. The culverts was what, like? Forty-some thousand or whatever it was you sent us?
Stack of papers here, come after a minute.
So with all three of these projects, about four projects, we'd be roughly at six hundred thousand for our cost. Come up with that, so.
For all four. You're counting five, yeah, yeah.
To get back to Russell's question, what I sent you there is for the three large crossings, the culverts I have looking at, just the materials alone was twenty-three thousand, just for those three culverts. If you added the additional fourteen smaller culverts that we're gonna talk about today, there's another twenty-one thousand dollars in materials. So if you do every cupboard under the pavements on Connor Road eleven, you're forty-four thousand dollars just for the cupboard materials. That doesn't include installation, that doesn't, the pavement patching, any of that, so, so, I mean, that, that could be an expensive project, depending on what you guys decide to do with the twelve. Oh, I, I definitely recommend that you do the three big ones, cuz they're, they're tough shape, the smaller ones. That's kinda, that's, that's tough. Sometimes those things can last forever, and sometimes when they start showing rust, they'll give out on you pretty quick too, so.
So do we, you were asking about these other two bridges that.
So just kinda some planning here to try and decide.
We don't have to decide today though, right?
Nope, nope, you don't have to decide today.
When, how long do we have to decide on these?
I think for the federally ones, you're probably gonna want to pull it through here for your next meeting, if you wanna proceed with them, because of the timeline it takes to get these things through the DOT. By the time you do the wetland survey and resources survey, and it takes a month to get solicitation responses back from agencies, sometimes it can take two months to get a board permit, and just these, these bridge projects are. Taking longer, not short. Uh, environmental process under the last administration was gonna shorten, but it doesn't seem to.
Um, when were we talking, we're bidding the Connor Road eleven overlay?
That.
November? And if we didn't bid those two bridge projects or box cover project, would that hurt us with anything with the states?
No, I think what would probably be recommended then is if you're gonna push them back a year, is to push them to a November bid letting. Cuz what that does for the DOT is that uses. First funding, use twenty-twenty-two funding. Once it's obligated, it's gonna have to let it. So, i- it just depends on what the DOT has in the queue for projects, and seems recent years they've been begging.
Well, they, they sure tend to be giving the, the states a lot of money for infrastructure.
Yeah.
I mean, they're coming up, I mean, they're trying.
Yeah. He hasn't any idea what that's gonna mean, but, right? No, I.
Maybe nothing.
I, I tend to be skeptical because it seems like they've talked about that for ten years, nothing ever happens. I think the biggest thing for you guys is if the Red Dog funds become a reality, that's, that's probably gonna be your biggest opportunity to each piece.
Isn't that a couple of million that we would get, I think roughly, two point three or something?
Red Dog funds?
Yeah, I think that's over. Maybe it was less, one point three maybe, yeah, maybe one point three or something.
Only half the cost, I think. I, I know that you guys have a couple of bonds out there too, that I hear you're missing paying on, so.
We got some tight couple of years here, three years.
Let's just, yeah, perspective discussion, discussing it from a purpose, someone comes first. We don't know if I wear that first, but FEMA's been getting to the smolder, waiting to, so. I think maybe just. From the perspective of trying to be. Ahead of the game, if you guys do decide to proceed with these two particular bridges, I'll probably reach out to the wetland guys and the archaeological guys, and just get some prices to bring to your next meeting too, so that, uh. If for some reason something happens at the state level and you find out that you're getting some money through the highway distribution or something, and you wanna proceed with getting built in twenty-twenty-two, then ready.
Sound good.
Those big culverts you're talking about on eleven, Mike, what were those ones again?
Size?
Size wise, yeah.
The one right off of the state highway there, we recommended an arch pipe for that one, just because of the limited headroom on that and.
That's just off thirty or two hundred there, right?
Fifty to two.
By Danny Bremers?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's a seventy-one by forty-seven inch arch pipe, which is like a fifty-four inch of a one. Yeah, the other ones, the other two were forty-eight and sixty. So, I mean, you're, you're talking pretty decent sized pipe, the big thing is particularly that one with the, um, that pipe is like a hundred sixteen feet long. That's a sixty pipe, it's expensive, yeah.
Two more thousand one, that they got seventy feet of it right now. They will give us, uh. It, and it's also its twelve gauge, it's a heavier, heavier steel, it's a block. They had it made, uh, a forty and a thirty for another project. And, uh. Ricky True North knows I like cheap, so he, uh, cuz he had it pre-made for another job, and, uh. I emailed that to Mike, and, uh, it's only ninety cents.
About ninety-five dollars a foot.
Yeah, but ninety-five dollars a foot, and they'll make that additional feet that we need to make that pipe, uh, a hundred and seventeen. So that's cheap, I mean, it's a good deal on that pipe.
It is, the. It is, the in- the interesting thing to me on that is that you'd probably use that at the uh. That arch pipe that they have is an equivalent seventy-eight inch diameter. Arch pipe, um, so it's bigger, so you know. Farm country and drainage, the first thing I think of is that if you put in a bigger culvert, much bigger culvert than there was before, are you gonna have some downstream concerns? Um, so when you compare that is if you can get that cover for ninety-five dollars a foot, a sixteen inch round culvert is also ninety-five dollars. So in some ways. Do you, are you are you better off putting the round culvert back in at about the same price? And not have to have issues with downstream landowners concerned that you're. We're sizing the pipe too.
We got it, we got a bigger pipe, can we, we're gonna put more water in there, yeah, that's.
So.
We better be careful of that.
There's, there's nothing in stream crossing sta- uh, standards that uh. Prevents the road authority from putting a bigger pipe in. Put a bigger pipe in if you want, but just knowing the sensitivity, some of those things, so. I I get the idea that it's a good price on that particular size pipe, but you just don't need a pipe like that, so.
And those others culverts on eleven, besides those big three you're talking about, Mike, can we do directional boring on them?
If you needed to replace me in the future, you could directionally bore beside it.
Well, I'm just thinking of redoing the pavement up above the sagging swing.
Yeah. And that that's part of the reason why we wanted to get this discussed and get this going, so you get the culverts replaced this summer.
What's the length of those uh, culverts roughly? Say those smaller ones?
Smaller ones? Quite a few of them that are eighty feet long. A few of them are sixty, but I would say if you wanted an average on.
So just so you know, for a boring price, um. To do one of those colors is about a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, per culvert, okay.
So you can buy, you can install a lot of culverts for. I mean, it's.
Yeah. I didn't know what the price was, it was option.
Ra- roughly around three seventy-five a foot.
Well, there's, there's a couple culverts on that road that. We're gonna have to dig to China to replace it, I mean, they're way, way down and down in the ditch and that one's gotta be. Gosh, that one's a really long culvert and it's really, really far down in the. In the underneath the road, so.
How long is that one?
That uh, Vegas culvert is a hundred and sixteen feet long.
That must be Donald Bush's.
Yeah.
What's the size of that one?
Uh, sixty inch.
That's a sixty there?
Existing is a four gauge.
So.
Recommending a sixty, just because of the upstream culvert size.
Just the board, that was probably a hundred ten thousand, so we. We could dig it in.
Yeah, I think for the big culvert, you're gonna wanna dig it, I don't think there's much question about that, small culvert, culverts, then that always becomes. A question of if you can balance it out or not, but.
What's a thirty-six inch culvert cost? One thirty or how much a foot?
Thirty-six inch sixteen gauge is uh, three or four bucks a foot. Sixteen gauge.
About twenty-four bucks, plus the labor.
It's a long ways, a big dog. Yeah. Gotta have a long stick.
Big hole, bench yourself down.
Well, we're gonna take a look at those today and then we can report back.
One like that.
Uh, the June meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a a primer on this, just to, you know. What you have coming up and kind of makes sense to put it all together and say how much is the whole package gonna cost to.
Yeah. Sure be nice guy could, but.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, any other questions, Mike?
I'd like that one down on five done before fall of twenty-two. But.
Yeah, that's federal highway will help.
It'll never happen.
Okay, well, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
We'll be up for meeting. Thanks, Reed.
Thanks, Mike.
Emergency manager.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
So. Pass. That out for you guys. Uh, first thing on my list is the radio grant, um. Just to kind of give you guys a little bit of background, uh, history behind it here. Uh, for the first time in about twelve years, we had a grant come out for uh, radios, first time we've seen a grant in that long, pretty excited about it. Um, it fits in well with our new um, project that we're working on, the uh, integrated radio operability radio network, the siren project. Um, basically what that grant does from the federal side is allows us up to a thousand dollars per radio, I say up to because not all radios will cost us. You know, the full thousand bucks, Ted, that's all the same. Ted.
Ted.
That's all the same stuff.
I I see that.
Um, so anyways, uh, what's going on in front of you guys is we ended up applying for those radios. Um, I applied for, went to each of the fire departments and talked to them. Um, the only folks that qualify are the fire departments, EMS districts that go around, law enforcement does not qualify for this federal grant. But there is a state grant out there and kind of explained that a little bit that law enforcement does qualify for. Uh, but on the federal side, went and talked to the fire departments and spoke about which ones they would need and how many of which ones they would need. Um, so there's two different, there's three different types of radios that qualify for this grant, we only went with the two of them. Uh, the Apex fifteen hundred is basically like a C, like a CB radio for the most part. Um, the Apex sixty-five hundred, that's a dual head mount, uh, so it is a full radio in the front in the cab and then a full radio in the back wherever they decide they wanna put that. Um, Finley, for instance, is gonna put that in their um, old ambulance. Uh, Hope is gonna put that in their ambulance, uh, makes sense to have for, as an UT, makes sense to be able to have a radio uh, in the back for, to be able to talk if you needed. Um, so you guys have the numbers there and the prices there, um. On the very, on the bottom right, on the cost allocation side of it, uh, took all that and allocated it for each fire department and then came up with a total. So our total radio purchase is fifty-one thousand six, four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents. There is a state radio reimbursement that comes uh, immediately as soon as we buy those radios. Uh, that is fif- fifteen hundred dollars per radio, so automatically that comes back to thirty-three thousand. Uh, and then the total possible for the federal side is up to a thousand dollars per radio, so that comes back at the fourteen nine twelve. And then the leftover costs is uh, kind of what we need to talk about here, so um. When we apply for these radios, we applied under each department, so each department, there's no guarantee on the grant, right? So we applied under each separate department and they all understand that, you know, if we don't get the grant, we don't get the grant, there's nothing we can do about it. We're operating under the assumption, hopefully, that we get the grant, and if we get the grant, my request would be to the county to front the bill. And receive the cost back from each of the departments for what's due to them, so we would get all the reimbursement back. And we would get the leftover costs that are, need to be incurred by those departments as well.
We would pay those bucks or they would pay them?
They would pay them to us, so we would pay for all the radios and then be reimbursed hundred percent for all of the radios. Not necessarily a decision we need to make now, just more or less wanted to get you guys on that level, um, I talked to Emily about this a little bit. Um, there is some funding uh, available to be able to do that, um, I have thirty-four thousand and some change as well from the, I think that's included in that funding. Um, that is from those donations from the different entities that supposed to go towards this. So the fact that we haven't had a radio grant in twelve years, this was the fastest way to be able to try and get some radios. Um, what we did as well is we're only talking mobile radios, we're only talking truck radios, we're not talking portable, so reason being, a lot of different reasons, number one, cost, uh. Number two, warranty doesn't start on these mobile truck radios until we install them. So we can literally get them now and store them on a shelf. And install them, installation price and all of that stuff would go back into the departments, we would not be liable for any of that. So that's the idea, uh, portables, as soon as you order a portable radio, the warranty starts immediately. Uh, when Trail County is our dispatch center and they're not planning on switching over their dispatch services until twenty twenty-four, at the earliest is kind of what they're thinking. Um, there's no need for us to have the really super expensive radios that we were quoting before, so before we had the seven thousand dollars per radio quote that came out. I don't know if you guys remember that or not, um, these are twenty-two hundred and forty-three hundred dollars per radio, definitely significantly cheaper. Uh, reason being is because if we wait until Trail County switches over, so we get the radios now and store them and wait till Trail County switches over. We don't have to go with the dual band radios, so we don't have to be able to talk to everybody, we only need to talk on the new system. So if we time it right and make it work, so when Trail County switches over is good, then that'll help uh, our, lower our costs basically total.
So the funding you've got for accommodations is for county radio, right?
Yeah.
You're just saying.
I'm just.
Carry over and spot the funding for these other.
Correct, correct. So this would not be a this year project, we wouldn't know anything on the federal grant until September at the earliest, that's obviously after budget, so this will be baked. Um, into my budget for this year or for next year.
I mean, we need to make sure that we have.
Yeah.
Cover until they come back.
Yep, that's it.
I think discussing with Ben that that's certainly possible.
It'll be next year?
It'd be next year, yeah.
So we have to make sure that we.
Right, we, I have to make sure there's something there to cover it, so we don't fall negative before we get reimbursed. Um, my concern is we should not always talk to them and tell them we're doing this until you guys prove it, that would be my concern.
The only problem, I I understand and I agree with that, um, the only problem that I have with it this go around is that we didn't get the grant notification until after you guys had already met. And that's ran to all the departments real quick and then, I mean, this was a special service, that's, but yes, normally it's a you guys first and then them, but. So this is, and I also wanted to get you guys prices, I don't like coming to you guys and saying, hey, we wanna do this, well, how much does it cost, I have no idea. You know, so that was.
Okay, do we have a motion for move forward with this?
This would be provided we receive federal funding.
And that'd be on next year's budget.
Next year's, yep.
And fifty-one, four sixty is the amount that was required.
Correct.
We've got to wait until twenty-three to do this because it doesn't go into effect until twenty-four?
We definitely could, um, the, the problem is the grant at that point, so the grant ends at the end of ne- September next year. Uh, or the end of December, I should say, that's when I have to have everything purchased, so by the end of twenty twenty-two, I have to have this grant spent. So.
So these will work, the new radios?
These will work on the new system, these will only work on the new system, they will not work on the current system we have. So the current system we have, in order to get these guys switched over, that's that seven thousand dollar. Pricing that came in, wouldn't wanna spend that, um, we have to spend on the sheriff's office just because they have to have the communication with both. Um, and then sheriff's office requires um, uh, encryption. Um, FBI requirements, they have to have it, so uh, it raises the cost of those radios as well, so here look. When we get the cost for the sheriff's office, I know everybody's like, holy crap, why is it costing that much, it's because of all the stuff that goes into it that they require it to have.
All right, looking for a motion. Yeah, I'll make that motion. Motion made by Brian, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, so the next thing I have, I asked Emily to put generator grant back on here uh, for this meeting, I just got this this morning, so um. Bear with me, um, basically this is a memorandum of understanding between Department of Emergency Services and Steel County for our generator grant for here for the courthouse. Um, page three, so the first page of attachment A, if you guys are thinking or looking at it, um, that's our total grant that we are receiving is sixty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, and they break out the federal funding, the state funding, the local funding, so it is a reimbursement grant. Uh, we are responsible for the full cost and then we re- we get reimbursed up to, and then our costs that we would have, it's the ninety-nine hundred. So, um, you guys can read through it, I can try to answer any questions you have, um, it's a eighty-five fifteen split, um.
So this generator that is sixty-six five sixty-five is for a ninety K W generator?
Well, that's, that's what I had initially proposed back in the day when Horace Electric come and look at it, um, that's not the quotes that we have, the quotes that we have, this would be the equivalent to the fifty K that we got. Quotes for, and only the fifty K, not, so this would just do the electrical, this would not do everything.
The heating.
Correct.
How much was the total of, for, to have one generator do both?
I think it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand and some change, if I remember right.
So we would be, we would get, how much will we get of this?
We would get the. Um, forty-nine and six is.
Fifty-five thousand roughly?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. So if we decided to go with the bigger generator, we could use this still towards that?
Yes, it's just we would incur all those extra costs would be on us, but yes, we could, um. So if if you guys wanna go with this grant, I just need your approval to be able to sign this.
And if you get approved for it and we don't do it.
Well, we have three years to figure this out.
We do have three years?
Yeah, the, well, two years I should say, period of performance ends uh, twelfth of June of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So we have time, but I need, I have like. Fifteen days basically to get this back to them and whether they wanna do, whether they wanna accept the grant or not.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept this grant to, to apply for it. We would have a couple of years.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion made by Brandon, do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second that. Second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Keep forgetting.
Yeah.
It's that five seconds of the.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Brandon. Motion carried.
Um, that's all I have that's listed, um.
While you're here, you wanna talk about the emergency declaration, emergency fund? What what are the pros and cons for, what are your thoughts?
Um, well, the thing to remember, I think on the emergency declaration, and I heard a little bit about, a little bit this morning, uh, when you guys were talking, so the um. COVID declaration is what you're talking about, um. Yes, we are a little over a year into this, um, we just, just finished our response phase to uh, the declaration or to COVID. Um, and I say just finished, I mean, like, last week, we finally said even what we're done responding to it, we need to start working for some carpentry, all the missionaries work is okay.
My pleasure.
Uh-huh. How, how we're, how this works with the missionaries as we move from response into recovery phase. Um, recovery phase can mean anything from a couple of weeks, which is no guarantee, to months to years, we just don't know. Um, with just starting the recovery phase, we do, we do expect to have some cost with that, we have no idea what that is right now. Uh, short of having to declare a new emergency, you know, it, for instance, if you end the emergency, that's how we are afforded to do. Uh, and then we decide that, oh crap, we have more costs or this comes back, we need to do something, we declare an emergency then, otherwise this all is kind of kept in under the same loop. The other weird thing that happens with this emergency is this came from the top down, not from the bottom up, so normally in emergencies, they all come from us. And then they go up to the state, then they go up to the feds, that's how we get money opened up. Uh, when the feds declared, they opened up all those pots of money and. We didn't necessarily have to declare, the one reason we declared was to be able to open up our emergency fund as well. Uh, talked with Emily yesterday just briefly and um, you know, conver- brief conversation we had was on limiting the funding that, or limiting the expenses that comes out of the emergency fund. I'm a hundred percent in favor of that, I think we need to get to the point where we need to. Re-look at that emergency fund and um, balance it, I think is the right word for it, uh, so we need to make sure we have the right stuff there. From a unified command standpoint, the recommendation was to continue the emergency declaration, so with what ifs scenarios, right now, we just don't know what those are, I wish I could tell you. Um, but that's kind of our thought process, the other side of it is that it opens up our emergency operations plan, so by. Getting rid of that, we effectively close the emergency operations plan, we close the period on COVID, and we say we're done, we're not doing anything else with it. So my only thing is, okay, what if, and that's where that what if on the recovery side ends up, so I agree with what Wayne said earlier. Um, I think putting it on like a sort of consent agenda or putting it in your mind or whatever you guys wanna do, something we talk about every month, I'm more than favor of that. Um, I would say we're still too early to really get rid of it at this point. It's my opinion.
Well.
What's the harm in leaving it and just.
Nothing.
Not using the emergency fund and the rest of it is something approved by.
Nothing.
I mean, I could get to the point where all that stuff I gave you, we can balance that and get somewhere, can we think of. To a, a good level on the emergency fund, get a handle on it, get the stuff um. From the audits, where the way money transferred back over.
Yep, and I have no, I have no problem with that and I understand where it was coming from, um, it it is something, so uh, we need to do, she sent me the information, I have all the information. Um, I I think I sit with her to go through it all, that's just the process me and her have to go through, so. Um I I think I sit with her to go through it all. That's just the process me and her have to go through. So um. Just remember, we just finished all this response stuff, so this is, this is the time to do it, is basically what I'm saying. Um so.
Did we have any different emergency money last month?
Um I think Catherine had a few things come through from the vaccine side of things.
On the grant or on the.
I don't know if she kept it from, yeah, I don't know if she.
Know what's.
I don't, I don't honestly know where she pulled it from. We did have the time that came through for Lori and for uh Kevin. That came through on the emergency fund. I know that did, but as far as the rest of her public health stuff, I think it was minimal, if if anything at all. I really, I'm not sure. She gave me all the information she had yesterday. I haven't gone through it yet. Um from a FEMA standpoint, she, what she gave me, she wrote on the sticky note, we have just under nineteen thousand that we're submitting for reimbursement. FEMA, that's at that hundred percent. So as soon as I get all that worked up, she's got most of it. Kind of pull a couple of other things, but. I'll get that information to you guys, so you can at least look at it, see what we have. Does that answer your question? In a roundabout way.
So we. Operation or. Or we keep it on for another month and.
I I think um the decision that would need to be made today would be uh inclusive of that uh as well as if you're going to leave the emergency fund. You leave it at um the discretion of the chair for approval and all all approvals would have to go through the chair. Or the full commission, wherever you want to do, but I think it's.
We need to know before. If the spending is done now, I think.
I one hundred percent agree with that. Um so I I think that's where that decision would come. If I, my recommendation would be to leave it. And then uh put the caveat on the emergency fund that any any future expenditures would have to come before the commission before it's spent.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Then we revisit it next month.
Because things could. Go south on this, I feel.
Yeah.
The way we get into it now and people are getting pretty lax and numbers are going to start crawling, I'm afraid. I don't see it, but. You never know.
So we don't need a motion to continue, to just continue it as we. Was Trail still have a mask mandate though?
No, they voted today to rescind it. It's just a.
They did vote today?
Yep.
Okay, they talked about it at social service meeting.
Yep.
I know.
I just saw that.
Larry.
They voted three to two to rescind it.
Okay, does that everybody wants to do then? We'll leave that as is until. The next month, we'll revisit again, but any purchases or any spending needs to be. Approved first.
Yep, I do. I agree. That all right, Brandon?
I agree.
Right?
Yep.
Good.
Um did the fire declaration ever get added on, Brandon?
That is on there.
Okay. Um so. What I wanted to talk to you guys about that um was basically bringing back up to you guys this month, and that's another thing I kind of want to revisit monthly. That will go through the summer. Um you heard Angie's um thing today about the um less drought than maybe expected and maybe that's in there. Um. I don't know what you guys have been hearing from people. Um I've had a couple of not so fun phone calls from different farmers, but. It is what it is. You always get those. Um but I have had a lot of people that have called and asked, do we have one on today? Do we not, et cetera? Um so my question to you is, what do you want to do with the fire number declaration? Do you want to keep it? If you want to keep it, do you want to see it changed? Or do you want to leave it alone?
Well, somehow we need to have something so people can see if there's a. Fire danger.
The problem is, is that it's all out there. People just still refuse to go out there and look at it.
They don't pay attention.
I don't know how to fix that.
Twenty two seconds.
It doesn't, a lot of them, it doesn't apply to that, I figured. And my goodness sakes, some of the fires the other night, they were burning with all that wind. I bet Eric Washburnt really got smoked because he just did a bunch of theirs just north of Eric's and he was getting the whole brunt of that.
Sure.
Which. Whatever.
So as it sits right now, when the fire uh indexes in the high, very high and extreme and red flag warnings, we are in a complete burn ban. Complete means no residential burning, no campfires, no nothing. Um one of the things I heard uh was that, well, can we allow campfires at least, even if they're in those times, if they're covered, if they're not so high? Um I personally don't care. Fire chiefs don't really care either, um as long as somebody is there to kind of keep it under control. Um back with the whole thing, hasn't he? I haven't asked him, but I don't think he has thoughts one way or the other on it. Um. I want to know what you guys want to do, I guess. If there's something you want to revisit monthly even, or is this something that you just want to leave alone and let sit? I just.
Well, with the current drought conditions, the way it is, I think we need to leave it in place.
As it is right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
No, leave, leave the.
Pretty much.
No, I'm saying we leave the burn ban on.
I know, but you have it as high.
You have it right now. Every time we go into high and very high.
I think you should move that to very high. People to high. It is getting green now. It's kind of, they all know to slow down a little bit on the normal campfire, but it. Control campfire, not a burn pit, a campfire.
Who?
Brandon was trying to.
Ben. Have you, have you discussed any of this with the fire chiefs and and what they've they've talked back to you on, I guess?
Yep, I had um just a brief discussion with Andrew and with um Bo and they both kind of said the same thing. They both said, well, what do you want to do? Um but eh when it comes down to it, they. They hear the same thing that we hear, so they're okay with with moving into kind of the very high. Um. I don't know. Ultimately, it's a commission decision. We already put it in place.
So the very high will won't let you have campfires or will?
So all, what we would, what we would do in that point is we would take their current emergency declaration, declaration, if I can talk. Uh we'd rescind the fire emergency declaration effective today and then we would re. Declare the fire declaration when the index is in the very high with all of the same caveats we already have in place. Very high, extreme.
What are the other counties here?
Some counties have removed it completely and then had to put some back on. Some counties are leaving it. Um surrounding county, Grace County doesn't have one. There's only a state and the. Only county in the state that doesn't have a fire declaration in place. Um that's a whole different thing, but um. The rest of the counties, they like Grand Forest County put one on for a while and it got really bad and then they removed it right away. Cass County did the same thing. Uh Trail Counties is in the extreme and uh red flag warning only. Um.
But right now, it looks like Grand Forest, Griggs, Barnes and Richland doesn't have a ban on today.
Maybe they just.
Today.
Sure.
Ben, how many times are we? Are we in the high range in the years past, I guess, just looking at? You know, or is most year we're in the high range and and and, you know, I know we're looking at droughty conditions here moving forward. And can we say, you know, two meetings from now, it's it's super bone dry. Can we re- readjust this again? If we adjust it to the 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 extreme high or 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 whatever we're talking, then that's when the burn ban goes on. Um. Give me a little background on that, I guess.
Sure. So um to answer your question about how often we're in the high, um I'd say about eighty five percent of the time we're in the high category, honestly. Uh we seem to be there quite a bit. Even in years past, we seem to be there quite a bit just because summers get pretty hot and they get pretty dry. Um we've not been, ever been, this is the first year we've ever been in the high for our emergency declaration. Um. Different reasons passed for reasons why we haven't done it is because we want to let the farmers do what the farmers need to do. Um and I and I understand that and I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. Um but we also need to make sure that we're not, you know. Burning when it's sixty mile an hour winds and drought conditions either, so um. We're not in very high and extreme often. We've actually been in very high extreme. We've actually been in a red flag warning. Four times, three or four times this year, and that is two more than we were last year. And that's our, I mean, as the full year last year, we were in twice in a red flag warning. It's only the fir- fourth of May and we've already been in it four times. Talking with the fires, uh the Forest Service guys, they think this is going to be a thing that's going to continue throughout the summer, um especially out west. Uh I think here in kind of the River Valley, I think we have a better soil and better um. Precipitation than most do, especially out west. Um. I think we needed the emergency declaration right away and I was, I'm all a hundred percent in favor of the the high. Being in the high um for the declaration, but I think now it's something that we at least need to talk about. And I don't know what you guys hear. I don't, I don't probably get the same phone calls that you guys get. If you get any at all, I don't know. So.
No, they don't want to know. They don't call. They don't want to know.
I think we're in loaded it.
Well, there's loads in there. That means you can burn with it.
Yep.
I just Google if they were in burn ban. Was that?
Scroll fast, scroll up, because I want to only tell you who has burn ban.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
We kind of call one two, but.
Or that. I get a call.
Yeah, I get it. Yes, I get at least three.
Is it something?
I wouldn't have scrolled up.
I, when I put the link out there, I didn't get directly to that map, so it was on that map instead of everything. Yeah, I think that's something easy to do. Um so I can do that. That's not a big deal. Um I've been trying to do it every day that we're in a burn ban. Um. But again, I think it's something that still needs to be discussed monthly. I don't think it's something that.
I agree, because I mean, if we get rain, it's going to be all fraught about again, so.
Right.
You can update that fire department sign?
Yep.
The Facebook keeper. Every day and all that stuff or whatever you do.
Yep.
That's nice. I look at that every time I go out of town. Hope should have one like that down there.
It was like thirty seven thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
Thirty six.
Never the district paid, I don't know.
Legion paid it?
No, well, donations. They had like eighteen thousand for donations.
Yeah, well, it's nice.
Huh? So what are we going to do here then?
The problem is we'll be getting out of, so I see. Yeah, man sitting people. That's why I'm not here with the high neck. As I get, as we get a little green, it may disappear a little bit. Not talking bomb fires, I'm talking small.
Residential campfires is what we.
I could sorry, me too. Not gas, gas is still okay.
Oh. I suppose.
So I think the recommendation um would be to rescind the current fire emergency declarat- fire emergency and burn ban declaration that we have. Uh and then to declare a new fire emergency and burn ban declaration. Uh when we are tying everything to the fire index, when we are in the very high. Extreme red flag warnings and that will to include all. Fires. That would solve our. Dilemma for this month.
Hey, we have a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
The caveat that we. Are are we going to discuss this monthly then too, uh to see if we need to adjust again?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So move.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll get a new declaration down to you real quick.
Good. Anything else for Ben? Thank you, man.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Tax director, did you check for? We have a motion for a five minute recess. Do we have a second?
Second.
We didn't do that, did we?
No, we did.
You did?
Yes, we did. That was Johnson and Walker that did.
So how much is? Three foot, about sixty five foot.
Warm in here. Two hundred, that's what I'm going over. When that time comes. Yeah. I can't yell at you for not giving it for the rest of this because nobody else got stuff in the packets, so. So. I just think about that. Do you have a sign with you? No.
It's uh.
Do you have it in here?
Yeah, that's the sticky stuff. That means just a shirt wearing.
Kind of like a blue light?
It's like blotchy when it's over. It's like a haze almost over you.
All around.
Outside you.
It's good. So you caught me though.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
What you saw in the stick? It's from the county to the city, just one of those properties. It's easier than tracking down Marcy.
You get a new puppy?
Yes.
You got one dollar any, aren't you?
Two.
Two, now you're three.
Four.
Glad you don't live over by us.
Those are my kids.
Well, your kids, you got one kid.
One.
Now you got four.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That your idea?
Of course it was. Did you see?
No, Cam didn't.
Oh, yep.
He goes, you have to ask me, they gotta be the puppy.
Chocolate lab.
Oh.
Huh? Black and yellow. I have all colors now.
Oh.
Um we got it from Brittany. Nice.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
We need to put in, see me make speak talking. Put that in a record.
The what? Deena, Deena made the coffee today. I made one pot, she made two. Is she allowed?
Because the one we found is too big. It's not the smaller one.
Okay, ready to go again?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm here. Okay, um, so to start off, I. There were four properties that came off the Renaissance Zone exemption this year and I added them back onto the tax rolls. You have those values and properties listed on the sheet of paper. Should have been included in your packet. Uh, Finley Motorsports. Um, there's two parts of the Finley elevator exemption. So the first half went on this year. Um, IRE insurance and then Hannah Eligard, which her property is in Hope.
What was IRE insurance about?
They were on the Renaissance Zone exemption.
Their office.
And they're off now with the office was. So they got added back on to the tax rolls this year. And I sent out a total of forty notice of increases this year. And then I had a total of three appeals off of the forty that I sent out. The first one was from um Finley Motorsports. The city Carl came to the um city council meeting and kind of just wanted to clarify which property was on the exemption and then. He didn't quite appeal the value. It was more some of the city council members appealed the value for him. And they um passed to lower it to four hundred and fifty thousand from five hundred and fifty to. Eight forty-seven for the structure. And then Eastern Township approved to reduce Danielle and Jesse Bremer's property or their structure. House from a hundred and twenty thousand four sixty-two to one oh eight four sixteen. And the reasoning, they had compared it to Arlen and Lori Fettings' house um just south of town here. And that was valued at a hundred and four thousand. So that's why they lowered that property. And then the third appeal was from. Which I do not have on this list cuz we had just finished, I'm discussing the Bush addition out at Golden Lake on Tuesday night. Jeff Nelson had appealed those values um on those properties. And Golden Lake did approve and lower them to thirty or twenty-five thousand per half acre. With a twenty-five percent reduction, which would be eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty per half acre. And then each lot would be adjusted by size.
So these are all appeals that'll be at our meeting.
They should be at um county equalization. Just a heads up. I don't know if everyone will show up. They have to show up for that if they wanna make that appeal to county.
That'll be at our next meeting.
Just kinda wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. So I did not send anything out to him. He just showed up to their meeting and appealed his structured value. He did not go to um any of the Vanguard meetings when they first raised his property. He just came to township meeting and they approved to lower it to a hundred and ten thousand from a hundred and forty-three. That's all I have for those appeals. Office updates. I have approximately forty properties left to assess for the um farm exempt properties that were missed by Vanguard. And then I just finished a class for my class one license. It was a four day course I took last week. That's office updates. Do you have any questions on any of the appeals or properties that are on this list?
You have all the information along for the June meeting for all appeals on.
Yep.
We'll just discuss it then.
I just kinda wanted to give you guys the heads up before that meeting.
That's over Golden Lake. Was all that familiar addition on the south side there?
East side.
Oh, it's always side.
Right by Tom Williams campground.
The other side of the road on the east side of Jeff. Shout out there. I was thinking it might be a new addition on the road.
Nope, that one's not done yet or hasn't fully been recorded yet. That's all I have for tax unless you guys have questions for me on the tax. Okay, um, then I'll go to the Title VI training for you guys. So to start, I did hand out the form to each of you. You seen it? So Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, um outlaws discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. The county is to provide employment opportunities and services to everyone regardless of age, sex, color. Race, national origin, disability, handicap, religion, political beliefs, and status with respect to marriage or income status. Um, we must meet these requirements to receive federal funding, but all programs must meet Title VI standards, whether federally funded or not. All documents for Title VI are available on our Steel County website. Our complaint and procedure forms are on there. For equal opportunity employer questionnaire is on there as well that each employee, when they start here, will get and it's optional if they wanna fill it out. And return it. And then limited English proficiency plan. That has not been updated since twenty twelve. So I don't know if you would like me to look back at that. We'd have to go through it again and it would have to be approved by the commission.
That's the language line.
Yep.
Language questions.
And then recruitment, all vacancies or promotion opportunities must be posted internally and externally. For any position that does become open within the county. Um advertisements for the position must contain the language. Steel County is equal opportunity employer. Um, any advertisements. Do need to be submitted to me. I just get them from the paper when they come in, so I do just get those copies myself. See. We have the I speak cards, which are available on each floor um during the county nurse office, auditor's office, and then Ben's office. And they are, they look like this. Every language possible.
Do you have to learn those languages?
No, no, I can call a number and we can get somebody on the phone for that. Um, meetings, which Emily does, um so notices for public meetings must contain information for individuals. To call if special meeting accommodations are needed and she does post those um with the paper as well, I think. Right, Emily? You post the, like the special meetings with the paper. You give them that notice, yeah. Um, any bidding requirements and contractors, specific language is required regarding equal opportunity. Proof of non-discrimination practices, including providing opportunity to disadvantaged businesses, opportu- or enterprises. North Dakota DOT projects will most likely be reviewed at state level with any assistance of an engineer. Review all requirements prior to bidding or accepting complaint procedures. Um, will follow as formal complaint procedure document is available online. Must be filed with the county no longer than a hundred and eighty days after the date of the alleged discrimination. Must use Steel County's complaint form, which is available online. Or Social Service Office, but that I think is from when Kelly was here, so that's not available with them anymore that I know of. And then I have to do this training on a yearly basis to meet those federal funding requirements. Any questions for me? Oh, you have that. Perfect.
Do we need to make a motion for that or are we just?
You have.
Chris, I need a motion to. You guys wanna look at it? Your motion? Motion made by Brian, second.
So move.
Motion's been made, second's been done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Brandon, Amy will email you out the sheet.
I did. I did. I did at nine thirty this morning.
Which date do you want? Today?
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you hear that?
All day. Tomorrow I've sent up the bio here. You know that?
Any questions on Title VI?
We did go back. I know it was brought up before on heavily always um posted jobs. Internally and externally. Um, and there wasn't anything except for, there was maybe something quite a ways back, right? But other than that, you found advertisements for.
Everything else. The only one is possibly with, I think Aurora doing. Treasure was the only position and that was a few years ago, so. I don't remember that one and I didn't see an ad for that anywhere.
Okay, so we know what we need to do going forward, so.
Time clock.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Amy manages the time systems and the hours for payroll. Um, just that kind of. Not that we had Capford and Ben and she's my star, Charlie, Amy, Jenny. All using that.
Yeah, it's really nice. Um, we went from five to six exception sheets down to one.
Finally found something that'll work.
The only negative with the current system is that you can't have both sick leave and vacation active at the same time. Somebody wants to enter in, say, sick leave and for you only have vacation active, I have to go in and manually change that setting. For them to actually choose. But there's another system, which is with the same company.
So that's that upgraded.
Does.
Option of this that has the app for it. Uh, it's nine dollars a month, so like a hundred and eighty per year. Uh, so every week we can do it. And that also allows you to do the settings, you know, where they punch in within a mile of their house. Or five miles of hope or whatever. Do they have a range of where they can punch in from instead of.
You know, no rules. Or you can have the vacation and sick leave active at the same time in that system.
I think it, it is well worth a hundred dollars a year um to have the app, at least for the punching enforcement.
So how do you know?
I found it very, very useful.
Can you abuse it though? It's, I mean, you could abuse it though by using the phone.
Right now, you could abuse, abuse it. I could punch in one of lying in bed, but. I mean.
Cuz you can just look up on their website and log in through the website right now.
So going to the app would allow you to put some parameters to restrict that a little bit?
Yep.
So.
For lunches, we don't, they have to take over a fifty minute lunch before they can punch back in. So we have that set up right now a little bit. We actually have to take the full lunch.
We use that uh, the app. Uh, we like it a lot.
Do you? Boy, you got a lot of guys.
I don't know if like our app, you can see where they're at when they punch in.
So do they have the parameters you can set up, like the geolocation?
You can, but we don't.
You don't.
Use that because we got them scattered within.
All over. You see his trucks all.
Everywhere.
Well, you gotta trust.
Everybody's exceptions for five, six, eight months to one.
That's pretty good.
They're able to add in notes to it and say, hey, I need to use this or. It's a lot more convenient.
So we're just gonna leave it. Just gonna leave it as it is then and review it in six months to see if we.
Well, I think they wanna do that app.
Or they wanna do that.
The other. It's the same company, just to do more of an upgrade.
When do you guys stop? You always want something.
Nine dollars.
It goes back to accountability.
Yeah, Ben's always wanting. Yes, this is in the thousands.
All right, uh, do you guys wanna move ahead with that nine dollars?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by ten, do we have a second?
So move.
Second by Russell. All in favor?
Nope.
Thanks for coming out to our Golden Lake meeting a couple times. Appreciate that.
She gets paid the big bucks for that.
It was a long day. I just had a class at seven AM till for that day.
We had two meetings there, probably an hour and a half each that were.
Okay, we got a result, we got a, an answer and result to it, so that's good.
That's good, yeah.
That's good, is right.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so we have lease lots, but.
Yeah, the option that I had was the lease off payments were due as of May for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Emmy.
That's why it wasn't on there. I was really hopeful that we would receive everybody's payments for the year. By the deadline or maybe even a couple days after, but we have. We have two people who have paid their lease lot. Uh, payment for twenty twenty-one and we also have two additional people that. Has paid the lease off payment for the year and we also have a big ninety-two year contract. So technically for the. So I can send out certified notices to all four of them yesterday. Um, to notify them, but so you guys are aware if we want to have that.
Send the next letter from Charlie.
Are these people out there or? So when do we, when are they due?
Oh, like the lease lot.
I can't believe that everybody on that list like they're in the other on there a lot. Wow.
The two of the back chances were late last year as well.
I think uh, see what the response is. I can bring it up in the June first meeting or June meeting, I should say.
But you do want them paid up to date with all taxes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would say.
That is the agreement though, just making sure.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep. Brandon?
Yep.
Brandon, I'll email you the list.
That'd be great.
It's coming right now.
I'm surprised about the second one.
Yeah. I don't know.
Terminally scheduled for last week in May. That's what it's on schedule for this year too. I know we, we'd have a call twice from an individual that I think they would like it earlier. I know it's been a, a lot nicer spring than normal, so. Did you guys want to move up the first trash pickup out at the lake or not?
Or this is gonna be all over. We're gonna be throwing the ditches. I would, I would.
Check, I can start. Normally it's always, there's this obviously scheduled to start the last weekend. The week of the twenty fourth.
Mines by Dragger's every two weeks.
Is there anything new with the store?
I mean. Heard any future anything? There was an update.
Yeah, I sent down another update from Jay that they hadn't done me.
Done in, oh, I saw that. Yeah, that's right.
Then, uh, so now we have to do approval. First we got two bills, see if the North Star Electric. There was some questions. He gave us a bid for fourteen fifty-two thirty-two. Um, so he's, he billed us for the fourteen fifty-two thirty-two, but then he also added on about three hundred and ten bucks for installing extra. It says install three outlets and medical office. I think the question is why are those extra? I'll pass that around.
She, I remember upstairs she needed more plugins for those fridges or something. I mean, that was the reason, but it wasn't like.
She, they approved the quote, but she's not sure um when they came to for the vaccine cooler, he said that they had to do the additional three in order to do the other one. She said.
I'm assuming there was a standalone.
Yep.
So assuming they had to move stuff around.
So are all the lights in the port dock now? All the lights are done?
He was waiting for some bulbs in the basement for the long eight footers or something. Then they had one in the closet uh right by the social services door. That's the closet there. They had to install one there. And then they had the uh back entryway they were working on that one. But either way, they were all done. So as far as I know that, if he finished everything that day, I was here on, it was Monday last week? Oh, yeah. On the contractor bellies is supposed to be removed and stuff on them. But he didn't because these are newer doors. Those these were the newer upgrades. He just left them in there. But the older ones, he did take out, so.
I have a question because we're having quite a bit of flickering with the lights. I mean, the one day it flickered four times in five minutes. Um, so the girls, they're not gonna shut off the light. This ends up being hardly got a headache. Amy gets head migraines and it does it not only here, it does it in this room, it does it in Clark and Corks. So I don't know if that, it didn't do it before. Is it a bulb issue or is it wiring or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I'd give him a call back and.
I did. But he's been texting, he's texted me twice to get a check.
I just say that you need to get the problem fixed. If there's a problem before you.
He said you can try to change the bulbs, but it might be a power surge.
I was there every time. I think it's a power thing. I don't think it's like.
Well, we haven't had an elevator. I don't know how we resolve it, but it should get resolved.
Yeah.
Otherwise these people are gonna act with no lights on and like not to be updating the lights.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So are we, are we gonna pay him now and he'll just fix it? Prove it to pay him or?
I think so. He obviously needs the money, so. And then we'll just keep after him. Maybe document the uh flickering too, so you know when, just in case there is a power surge going on somewhere.
Sounds good.
Okay, everybody's good with that? So then we need a motion approval with the bills. So move. Motion made by Ted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, we have, we have one other question. We asked Carrie about the CDs. I don't know. We don't have it on the agenda. The CDs.
It was in the department.
It was on there, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was on the, in our packet too.
Okay, so. Um, she gave us the amounts from the bank, so. At each bank that we have CDs in. And uh. We, right now we have one year interest or one year that we haven't signed up for and we were maybe talking about going longer to see if the interest rates are any better.
Well, wasn't she saying that we've never touched these?
Yeah, and then there's one from United where it's point one five.
So if we're never touching them, why wouldn't we put them in there for three years or something?
Yeah. I, I think we should see. We should have her find over a three year and five year.
I would, yeah.
And now we. We want to change them all. Have her see what the interest rates would be if it was three years, if it was five years.
Probably not much difference.
Might not be.
Even on like twenty-five to three hundred thousand dollars?
Okay, how should we uh? We'll have her do that and then we'll discuss it. June meeting.
Sounds good, yeah, I just.
I assume that's what it was for when it was on the packet there. So I was looking at the same thing and I remember last month, wasn't she saying that she doesn't, ever since she's been here, we've never touched them? They just roll over on their own and stuff. So we're at the mercy of what the bank decides they want to do.
Okay, well, yeah, that was the, I think that was the same one that she sent out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then I think it said was an exclamation.
Oh, yeah, I hear it again. It doesn't say what.
Okay, uh.
I did sign it.
I guess with that.
Motion carried, Jerry.
Motion of the jury.
Thank you.
Motion made by Brian, second? So move. Second by Russell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Brandon. Thank you.